Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us for the November 12, 2022 Meeting of the Arlington County Board. I'm Board Chair Katie Crystal, joined this morning by my colleagues Vice Chairman Dorsey, Mr. DiFranti, Mr. Karen Tonnus, and Ms. Garvey. I am going to begin actually with just a moment of quiet if we can. As many know, this community lost one of our younger members early Friday morning in a drunk-driving accident, a Washington Liberty student who is greatly valued, I know, by his classmates, certainly by his family and by the entirety of his neighborhood. And so, we're going to just take a moment of reflection. Thank you. And I think this is really an excellent opportunity for all of us to note that drunk-driving is on the rise in our community as we try to combat it as a government. It's also something that we each have a responsibility to do with our friends and loved ones. It is clear that the costs are very, very high indeed. So, we are going to then move forward with our public comment period, of course, before moving into our regular meeting. Thank you to everybody who has joined us today, as well as those joining us remotely on Microsoft Teams. A couple of announcements. For those who are speaking in person today, who are new to speaking, that podium can be adjusted moving the up or down arrow buttons on your right. Please do speak clearly into the microphone. That helps not only us hear you, but it helps your voice be picked up on the recording, so those following along virtually can hear you as well. If you are submitting documents as part of your testimony, please hand them to our clerk, Ms. Jacobs. That way, she can distribute them to all of us. And we do encourage you to include your name and contact information, so we can follow up with you if necessary. For remote speakers, please keep your microphones muted and your cameras off until you are called on to speak. If you are on the phone, please unmute yourself using star six. If you are using the Teams app or through a browser, you can click that microphone button on the toolbar. We do have our Spanish-language interpreter available for the public comment portion, I believe, virtually this morning, so I'm going to ask her to introduce herself.
The interpreter should be here in person, actually.
In person? Okay, fantastic.
Okay, we'll need to check on where they are.
Fantastic. Well, I'm going to finish my announcements, and then we want to make sure that she's available before we launch into public comment. Notably, that we may occasionally need to get up and stretch our legs. There are monitors and sounds in the back, so we can hear you, even if you can't see us briefly. And just my standard reminder about our public comment period, again, especially while we're waiting for a translator. Many have heard this a few times already this year, but the purpose of the public comment period is to alert the board to issues that are not, have not been the subject of recent public hearings or upcoming public hearings. And we have a one-speaker-per-topic rule. The goal there is to ensure that we can hear a range of topics, be fair and consistent across different groups and speakers, and helps us efficiently manage the public comment period, so that we can get on to our regular agenda and respect the time of your neighbors who may be waiting for those regular agenda items. We really appreciate everybody's help and adhering to those meeting procedures and being fair and respectful to fellow residents, particularly those who are with coordinated groups. We do ask coordinated groups to send just one representative forward, but you are welcome to make us aware that you associate yourself with that speaker by standing, for example. And there are many other ways in which you can engage with us as county government, particularly the county board. You can write to us at countyboard@arlingtonva.us. And if you'd like to have a more dynamic conversation, explore your concerns more deeply, bring more voices to the table, to present different facets of one topic, we particularly recommend attending an open-door Monday session, which are designed exactly for that purpose. Our clerks, Ms. Jacobs, Mr. Kushner, can help answer any questions about that. And any word from our interpreter?
Not just yet. We're working on it.
Do know that we have a couple of speakers who are, we would really, really like to make sure that they are available for that. Who, can I maybe ask for our first two speakers?
Yes, our first two speakers, Brian Coleman's first speaker, followed by Anne Voderbergi.
Okay. I think, why don't we go ahead with our first two speakers? We'll check in again on the translator status after that. Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Coleman, good morning.
Morning, County Board. When we discuss missing middle, too often, we veer into debates over minutia, whether we should allow six places, eight plexes by right, tree canopy, increased parking limits, et cetera. However, I'd like to take a moment to refocus the conversation on what I believe should be the lodestar of our efforts, reperative justice. My grandfather once told me about an experience he had when he was a child, in which his father took him along with him to a bank, where he intended to apply for a motor's loan to buy a home in a neighborhood in the then-bustling Steel Town of East Chicago. There, he watched my great-grandfather, a proud veteran of the Spanish-American War, go hat-in-hand to a man who told him, and I quote, "Boy, we don't give loans to people like you here." My grandfather later realized that this was due to a racially restrictive covenant, established to prevent Black people from living in that neighborhood. This was the experience of countless Americans living throughout the county, including Arlington County, where the noxious tree of restrictive covenants then bore the rancid fruit of exclusionary zoning, which poisoned our communities and deprived people of color the opportunities afforded to their white counterparts. The county is now at an inflection point, and you have the privilege of leadership in this moment. Repertative justice requires centering those who have been excluded from our neighborhoods and doing the utmost to ensure that the opportunities afforded to all Americans are granted to them as well. By implementing the missing-middle proposal to the fullest extent, the county board can change the trajectory of the county's history and begin to address the pernicious effects of exclusionary zoning. I implore you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Our next speaker is Anne Voderbergi, followed by Maha Hilal.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have two things to share today about the Barcroft redevelopment. First, I want to reinforce what my colleague Jen Owen shared with you in September. The Arlington Community Foundation is joined by 19 other organizations to urge you to commit now to creating 255 30% AMI units at Barcroft. The recently submitted plan only shows 31 units at 30% AMI, which is far too few, given that the ultimate build-out is likely to be more than 2,500 units. Secondly, I want to assure you that all 20 organizations involved in this call to action explicitly support the use of income averaging, in combination with other financial and land-use tools, to achieve more hardwired 30% units at Barcroft. Income averaging would allow the rents to reflect the needs of the current renters and others like them in the future, down to 30% AMI, up to 80% AMI, and everyone in between. All 1,334 calves at Barcroft would still average to 60% AMI, which is in the spirit of the agreement among Jire Lynch, Amazon, and the county, and it will achieve the goals of the Pike Neighborhoods Plan and the Affordable Housing Master Plan. The foundation is joined in support of income averaging by leaders of the following organizations who serve, advocate for, and are concerned about the continued housing burden and displacement of our most vulnerable neighbors. They are Alliance for Housing Solutions, Animal Welfare League, AFAC, Arlington Free Clinic, Arlington Thrive, Arm-in-Arm, Aspire, Bugata, Bridges to Independence, Capital Area Treatment and Recovery, Doorways, Edgy Futuro, Just Neighbors, NAACP, Northern Virginia Family Service, OAR, Path Forward, Seek and Voice. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Voderbergi.
Hey, our next speaker is Maha Hilal, followed by Tom POR.
Do we have word from our interpreter?
We don't, but apparently, we no longer need the services.
Okay, all right. Thank you. In that case, Dr. Hilal, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for giving us time to speak. My name is Dr. Maha Hilal. I'm with the Muslim Counter Publics Lab. I'm here today because of the crisis of affordable housing. This has been a topic, as all of you know, that has been repeatedly addressed with no satisfactory solution, and it's become a huge problem in Arlington County. Specifically, I want to talk about Amazon's Housing Equity Fund. As you all surely know, rather than providing grants and donations to various properties to provide affordable housing, less than 10% of Amazon's equity fund is actually in the form of grants. And surely, you know, as the board, who gave Amazon, who voted to give Amazon, millions of dollars in incentives, that the Housing Equity Fund has resulted and will result in Amazon deriving more profits from the community, and that is a problem. And what is also a problem, when we think about affordable housing in Arlington County, is that the board itself has provided loans to, for example, Jire Lynch, to buy property. And this is a problem, right? Because these are public funds that are being used, and nevertheless, it's still not affordable. These housing units are still not affordable. And I should note that County Manager Mark Schwartz said, "This is really a once-in-a-generation opportunity for our community to preserve the largest neighborhood of affordable housing units in the county for the next century." Why is this a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity? Arlington County Board should be ensuring that everyone in the county can be and have access to affordable housing. This is a crisis that needs to be addressed immediately.
Our next speaker is Tom POR, followed by Peter Evans.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for the opportunity. I wanted to let the board know about a recent study by the personal injury attorneys of Shapiro, Washburn, and Sharp about the most dangerous pedestrian zones in Virginia. As you just reminded us, pedestrians are extremely vulnerable, and when they are struck by motor vehicles, they almost always suffer devastating personal injuries or death. They studied the seven years of Virginia DOT data through last June. Eight of the 20 top danger zones are in Arlington. No other county in Virginia has that many danger zones. In fact, only Richmond has more than one. The top danger zone is Clarendon. Alcohol and congestion don't mix. Also on the list, second on the list, is Ballston. The most congested, highest-density zip code in the metro area is there. We see the RB corridor now. The planning there is to add infill, additional density between those danger zones. So, I can only assume that the planning goal is to create one big hot dog of death that runs all the way from Ballston to Roslyn. As a young engineering student, it was drilled into us that when engineers make mistakes, there are deadly consequences. When the Challenger blew up, this is now an anniversary of that, the engineers are screaming, "Don't lodge today!" But when people who don't have that ethic of taking their job seriously, crossing every T, dotting every I, bad things happen. I hope our planners can do better.
Thank you.
Thank you. I made it.
Thanks, Mr. Por.
Our next speaker is Peter Evans, followed by Josh Handler.
Good morning, Mr. Evans.
Good morning.
You can use those arrows to move it a little closer, if you like.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Peter Evans. I live in Arlington since, for 17 years, happily enjoying the community with my family. Appreciate the opportunity that you're providing for citizens to raise questions that aren't otherwise on the agenda. I'd like to raise the question of firearm safety. I appreciate the firearms ordinance that you passed a couple of years ago, prohibiting firearms in government buildings and parks and so forth. And I'm wondering if we should take another step to start promoting safe storage of firearms without infringing on anybody's constitutional rights. It seems like we could easily be encouraging and educating all firearms owners to secure their weapons and store their ammunition supplies separately, because that's the easiest way to significantly reduce the risk that our children, adolescents, teenagers, grandchildren, and others from hurting themselves or others. Safe storage can also reduce the risk of firearms being stolen, used in the commission of other crimes, or attacking our police and public employees. So, I'm wondering if the Arlington County Police Department is the right agency to embrace this public safety initiative, or if there's another agency that would be better. Thank you for your consideration, and I hope you'll have some good suggestions.
We appreciate that, Mr. Evans. Thank you for coming in.
Next speaker is Josh Handler, followed by Elizabeth Grossman.
Good morning.
No problem.
Can you hear me all right? Okay, great. Thanks. Good morning, everyone. Many are concerned that the missing-middle housing study recommendations would lead to further degradation of Arlington's tree canopy and environment, negatively affecting the health and well-being of Arlingtonians. On October 31, staff submitted draft general land-use plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Staff's option 6A recommendation that at least one shade tree be planted per dwelling as a landscaping requirement is likely to be inadequate to achieve the existing 20% tree canopy lock coverage requirement for single-family housing. County staff reassured the FNRC in May that a tree canopy coverage of 20% to 50% is achievable on missing-middle housing lots, depending on the type of dwelling. A FOIA request yielded the county spreadsheet of calculations that were behind this claim. Between 3 to 14, large and small trees would be planted, and that could achieve canopy coverages of 24% to 63%. Please look at the spreadsheet above you here, depending on the type of dwelling. If, in fact, option 6A is legal, its landscaping requirements for trees should be at least the numbers used for staff to claim a coverage of 20% to 50%. Overall, after many months of discussion about the missing-middle housing study, it has become clear it will not achieve its rhetorical goals of providing more affordable housing, righting past wrongs, or more diversity in ownership of housing. In fact, it's likely to result in expensive housing and displace owners out of what is existing less-expensive housing in Arlington. Moreover, the study seemingly neglected examining alternatives that already exist in Arlington zoning code, such as encouraging redevelopment of the many older commercial properties along transit corridors and joint-use missing-middle housing types. If the study proceeds despite being the housing policy equivalent of a bridge to nowhere, we should at least ensure missing-middle housing-type lots maximize the potential for tree conservation and planting. Also, steps should be taken to increase setbacks and limit lock coverage. This would further increase green space and planting room, help reduce stormwater runoff, and help keep new or redeveloped housing stock less expensive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Handler.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Grossman, followed by Jane Green.
Good morning, Ms. Grossman.
Good morning. I have slides?
Yes. If you, you can go ahead and start speaking. I'll start your timer and bring your slides up.
Oh.
You can start.
Okay. My name is Elizabeth Grossman, and I'm from the Arlington Tree Action Group. Since 2016, voters have approved park and recreation bonds upwards of $75 million. Yet we continue to see our parklands deteriorate. Let me share my view of Lubber Run, a well-used park in central Arlington. There are very large dead trees in Lubber Run. DPR's policy has been to let these trees fall. Next slide. This policy, however, has consequences. Next slide, please. When the, we don't, we don't just lose one tree when a tree goes down. We're losing all the surrounding trees. So, a dead tree is taking out several healthy trees with it. Next slide. This is another tree that came down. Next slide, please. This is a walkway which gets covered. Next slide, please. This is a walkway that gets covered in the park, that gets covered with silt and sand from the 2019 flood every time it rains. Next slide, please. Rather than walk through this muck, park users go off the path and trample around it. Ultimately, this will kill the tree. Next slide, please. This poor tree is covered in poison ivy. Indeed, the entire south end of Lubber Run is covered in poison ivy. A few years ago, there was another tree on the corner of Route 50 and the Service Road and North Edison. Someone put up a sign that said, "This tree is poison ivy." Next slide. Perhaps the county was confused, but they addressed the problem by cutting down the tree. Now, all we have is the poison ivy, but the tree is gone. Next slide. The tree next to it is also covered in poison ivy. I guess they'll wait till it's completely covered and then cut that one down, too. Arlington's track record as stewards of the environment is not great. So, my question for the county board is how will you increase density and maintain our county, our tree canopy, as you've promised, when you can't maintain the tree canopy now? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jane Green, next and final speaker.
Hello. My name is Jane Green. I am speaking for the Alliance for Housing Solutions on the Langston Boulevard, Plan Langston Boulevard, which we know represents the largest remaining undeveloped or remaining unplanned corridor, and has a great opportunity to provide socioeconomic diversity and be sustainable and livable with a walkable main street. The staff has done commendable job bringing this plan, the preliminary concept plan forward, and the Langston Boulevard Alliance has shepherded the community engagement process, but there's still a big concern about affordable housing. Most critically, the Plan Langston Boulevard must meet the Affordable Housing Master Plan's affordable housing goal for the corridor. The current building height scenario falls short of achieving the 2,500-unit goal for Langston Boulevard by nearly 1,000 affordable units by the 2040 target. The goal for the LB corridor represents one portion of the Affordable Housing Master Plan commitment, but it's important to reach the geographic diversity that was intended. It's unacceptable to pass a plan that fails to meet the goals of one of our comprehensive plan elements, and we cannot sacrifice the commitment that the county made to existing and future low-income residents by failing to use every tool available to increase the economic diversity and vibrancy of Plan Langston, of Langston Boulevard. This is particularly true when we have a land-use tool that is fiscally neutral for the county. So, we have a number of recommendations that we will share in a letter, but the most important thing is we don't want this to slow down the process. We think it can be incorporated into the final plan, so that we have an opportunity to meet the goals of the Affordable Housing Master Plan as part of the Plan Langston Boulevard, which will bring opportunities for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Green. Okay. Madam Clerk, is that our final public speaker?
Yes, it is.
Great. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming in this morning. Appreciate hearing from everyone who took the time to speak, and certainly appreciate those in attendance' willingness to associate themselves with existing speakers, too. I'll, as is our custom, try to comment briefly on some of the items brought forward, particularly those that are indeed new to the board, and then invite any further comments from my colleagues. Mr. Coleman and Mr. Handler, thank you for bringing in perspectives on the missing middle. I think your two sets of testimony really underscored that this is a conversation about really important values in our community, be that our stewardship of our natural environment, or redressing the ways in which our community, like so many is across the United States, have been built on histories of racial exclusion, exclusion, and appreciated very much hearing from you both this morning. Ms. Voderbergi, thank you for your call on behalf of the Arlington Community Foundation and your partners, as well as for the leadership. We greatly appreciate the role that you have played in not only making that call for a greater commitment of 30% units, but also doing some of the analysis on the potential tools and the idea, the clarity that you have brought to your supportive income averaging is really an important one, essentially allowing some units to go up to 80%, to enable other units to go down to 30% as a tool. To say maybe just another word on kind of where we are in that process, I know my colleagues and I share that aspiration for more units committed at 30% affordable. I'll note that just because a unit is committed at 60% affordable does not mean it cannot be more affordable than that. We, of course, have many tools, primarily our housing grants, to close that gap of affordability. Nevertheless, the ability to achieve, as you compellingly put it, "hardwired" units, is one that I think has certainly captured our attention and aspirations as well. Just a note, a note again about the process. Last week, or maybe late the week before, the property owner at Barcroft has submitted its master financing and development plan to the county. Our staff is deep into that, their analysis of that, reviewing certainly the proposed land-use concepts. There are some proposals in there that diverge from the existing neighborhoods and commercial form-based code, which is appropriate. I think we've all given our aspirations that that would be a floor and not a ceiling for the potential of Barcroft. But they are also looking at the financing tools, looking at all of the different sources and uses that are proposed in that master financing plan, to look at the goals and to see how many more see how many more units we can get to. And Ms. Vorderberg, I appreciate your comments that you'd like to see—we'd all like to see those numbers of, again, hardwired 30% increased. We are anticipating hearing from staff as they conduct their analysis and then begin to do some more community engagement about both land use and financing conversations. We, as a board, will not be considering anything prior to probably about spring of 2023, but of course, as the Community Foundation and others have pointed out, it's important to get there early and make sure that there are strategies still very much on the table. I think probably a pretty good segue into Dr. Hillel's comments, which we appreciate very much, and I know there are others as part of the coalition which you represent here today to raise those concerns, that affordable housing is still not affordable despite the county's investment of public funds. So I wanted to just say another word about the commitment to zero displacement, which in addition to the 99-year commitment of those units, at least 60% committed affordable, that Arlington has also made a condition, and Jair Lynch has committed to, that there be no displacement of any tenant at the property who was there during the time of acquisition, which is to say last December, irrespective of their income. That is a blanket commitment and promise, and there are a lot of specific ways that Jair Lynch, with the county's oversight and engagement—and this county board's detailed engagement—are working to make good on that commitment. Right now, Jair Lynch is allowed to submit rent renewal forms or ask for rent renewals, asking for up to 3% increases in rents, which we know is less than half of inflation, is, I think, about a fifth of the average rent increases throughout the county. Nevertheless, for people who are living in homes where their rent was already not affordable, 3% is really burdensome, and I know that there is a goal—we share it—that every individual for whom their current rent is not affordable based on their income, let alone any increase is not affordable, should be able to receive rent abatements, freezes, and we expect that the Jair Lynch team will work to connect those residents to the services, to connect them to things like, for example, housing grants that can put them on more stable footing for the long run. We have been very involved in this. I know my colleagues and I have all seen the paperwork that is being shared with tenants. We are following that. We appreciate the advocacy and the on-the-ground work of groups like ACE in doing that conversation and having those conversations, and ensuring that anyone who feels like this system of rent abatements or the opportunity to petition for rent freezes are not working for them, to bring that to our attention so that no one is displaced. It's one thing to have that goal, and it's quite another to make sure that it plays out on the ground. It's been really important to us. I think I've probably filibustered enough on that one, but as you can tell, it matters a lot to us. The only thing I'm just going to note is it is not a true statement that the county has given Amazon's millions of dollars in public funds. As some may have seen in the press a few months ago, our agreement with Amazon when they chose to locate here in 2018 and then formalized in 2019 was that they would get an increment of any growth in the hotel tax, the transient occupancy tax. That revenue stream has not grown because of the pandemic, and Amazon has not realized any dollars of local investment as a result of them being here in Arlington. Okay, so thank you for the opportunity to weigh in about that. I imagine my colleagues are going to have some thoughts on Barcroft, too, but I'll maybe do a quick rundown of some of our other items. Mr. Pior, thank you for coming in. I can share that we—say that we really share that focus not only on pedestrian safety but using data to determine where pedestrian safety is at risk. The county's Vision Zero plan helps us identify hotspots throughout the county and makes a commitment that those hotspots will be addressed tactically in the immediate and prioritized for long-term redesigns, for example, of intersections and other pedestrian safety efforts over time. A great primer on that, I suppose, is last month, we had a conversation—a detailed conversation—with our transportation engineering and operations staff, as well as Arlington County Police and the manager, to talk about what happens not only as a course of looking at data to see where the existing hotspots are, but when there is a collision or crash, and understanding what the drivers are. You talked about—I mean tragically, especially this morning, we were talking about driving under the influence being one of the major drivers, another, of course, is speed, and so looking to slow cars down, which is actually something we can often do in our more urban corridors through street narrowing, bike lanes, et cetera, as a way of just getting the traffic to slow down so that when there are crashes, they are so much less negatively life-altering, especially for the pedestrians involved. But appreciate the highlighting of that analysis Virginia-wide, and I think we can look that up and use that to inform our own analysis, too. Mr. Evans, thank you for coming in on firearm safety. I know that's an issue close to all of our hearts. We've often talked about this at a policy level. We actually—we'll be hearing our legislative agenda for Richmond later this morning, and continuing to petition for greater local authority to manage the safe operations of guns within our community as a priority. I really appreciate your point about education. I know that there have been some groups in our community—in fact, I believe it's Mom's Demand Action has done outreach that I've participated in through PTAs in schools to educate parents on how to do safe storage, but I don't know that that's a role that the county police department or others have historically played. Mr. Manager.
So there's more that we can do here, but I did want to point out to people, we have a program called Lock and Talk, which is done through the Department of Human Services, where you can get access to—and I'm going to get the—make sure I get the phrasing right. I think it's a cable and a trigger lock. It really is part of our focus on suicide prevention for people who have mental health issues so that they can't get access to drugs and firearms, but we have those available in human services, and we probably could do a better job of making that more widely known and through our police department, so it's an excellent suggestion.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Manager. And Mr. Evans, thank you for coming in. Ms. Grossman, I appreciate your points, I think particularly about maintenance of trees in our natural spaces. I think if I'm hearing you right, particularly the concern about DPR's policy of letting dead trees fall rather than proactively removing them, as well as maintenance concerns about poison ivy and others. I know these conversations about maintenance are very much part of our ongoing Forestry and Natural Resources Master Plan update, but I think those are two specific suggestions with which we can follow up and try to get more insight from DPR to clarify what the practice is with regard to dead trees and how we know that's the right practice. Ms. Green, appreciate your comments about the call to incorporate higher CAF targets or committed affordable targets, in particular into Plan Langston Boulevard. We know that Plan Langston Boulevard is, of course, also an ongoing issue in community dialogue right now, and that goal of ensuring coherence between Plan Langston Boulevard and its targets with our Affordable Housing Master Plan that do envision a significant supply of the county's committed affordable units into the future would be along the Langston Boulevard corridor, which is a high economic opportunity area, as are so many other places in the county. I think that's a really important call and reminder for us as that work goes forward in the coming months. All right, that has been a lot of me talking. Let me open the floor. Mr. DiFranti, I see your light on first for any comments you might wish to address.
Sure, just a few brief comments. First, thank you to those who come out today to show your concern and support at this meeting in addition to the last few months regarding housing and regarding the ongoing conversation we're having with respect to missing middle. It's important to stay involved, I believe, as there is significant work still to go. So thanks to both—to all who've come on that issue. I did want to just add briefly on your comments, Madam Chair, on Dr. Hillel. You made exactly the point that I was seeking to make regarding the importance of the concern, and I think it's—that we—there are some state incentives that have been provided, but we have not provided any incentives, and that's the main point. I would also say that fundamentally, if we had not taken action along with Amazon and Jair Lynch, these units would become market-rate, vastly unaffordable for many who live there. And I just—that's the fundamental question that came up to me in addition to the important concerns that Dr. Hillel mentioned. Mr. Evans, on firearms, I'm not certain of this, but I believe that there are state laws that prohibit us from taking some further act—I mean, we can take some action, but there are limitations on the lock and the safety provisions that you mentioned. And I can tell you that I and everyone on this board would love to take those actions, but Richmond and the state laws, I think, provide some limitations, and I think we have to go to the details, but broadly, I guess I would ask our county attorney, do I have it correct that there are some limitations on actions we could take with respect to requiring locking for folks?
Requiring, yes. We are limited in how much we can do as far as gun control. I think the speaker was referring to maybe just a voluntary program that the county could do.
Got it. Thank you. That's very helpful, but I think it's relevant to your point. Every voluntary step we would want to take, and we need change in Richmond to take more steps, frankly. And then, lastly, Ms. Green, to your—I think she's left—to your points, I think you raised fair concerns, and absolutely will be looking for that letter. So thanks, Madam Chair.
Ms. Garvin. Yeah, thank you, and everything's been covered pretty well, except I do want to thank Mr. Coleman for coming in and talking about his—I think it was your great-grandfather who experienced that. I mean, it was—in a way, a story about one small—you know, two people long ago, but it was a huge pervasive issue throughout the country, and it's actually one of the great national shame—you know, it was really shameful. So thank you for kind of reminding us about that and bringing that personal story here. Yeah, I think most of it's been covered. I was struck about the intersection between the whole issue of drunk driving, and it is indeed looking at traffic safety and Vision Zero when I've looked at it, and we look at all of these things we can do within engineering. We do need to do more. The biggest problem is drunk driving, and that gets down to—we probably need to be able to do a lot more enforcement on drunk driving, which, again, we're often limited in doing, which brings me to guns. And it's kind of crazy. Guns are actually meant to be lethal weapons, and those are even limited less—we have less control over those than we do over cars. I mean, you know, we have all of these safety mechanisms for cars. You have to have an age before you can drive. You have to have driving lessons. You have to pass a test, and yet with guns, we just give them out like candy practically to people. It's appalling to me, the state of the country, and I guess—I just—I'm making a little comment that your local government—there's a lot we need to do on all of these issues, and we are trying, but we have a lot of limits, and we all need to be working on both the state and the federal level to bring some sanity to many of our policies. And thank you all for coming in. Appreciate it.
Mr. Kentonison.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, everybody, for coming today. To—it is very obvious that housing is a major, major, major concern of Arlingtonians. How many testimonies we have heard about housing today, and it's also true that voters in Arlington also think that this is a major issue, and they have been consistently giving us quite some direction of how to solve that, which means being very proactive and going after the roots of the problems. And to all—to the entire testimony today from everybody, I have to say that I do believe that we are committed as a community to go after the roots of the problem, and that includes, of course, land use and zoning, but it also includes what else is related to fixing the root causes. And I've heard Ms. Vanderbroecker very, very clearly about hardwiring the commitment to non-displacement. This is the second time that we go about this. The first time, we were talking about no net loss on Columbia Pike, which is a very tough—no net loss of affordable housing, formerly market-rate affordable housing, housing that was available to every Arlingtonian 20, 30 years ago, and today, it's—you know, we have to subsidize every single step to catch up with the loss that we've—you know, have to take over the last 20 years. So I think that the conversations that we're having in this moment, the conversation we're having about missing middle, the conversations we're having about the Langston Boulevard plan, all these conversations have to be framed within this frame of creating a sustainable affordable housing policy for the way ahead. To Ms—to Mr. Evans, as somebody who has lived in Switzerland, who that mandates—it's a gun rights place—that mandates the safe—mandates and controls and the safe storage, I fully understand that. It beats me every time, not only legislation that makes it very difficult, but also jurisprudence that makes it difficult. Sometimes there have been judges in our country that said that it is an infringement on Second Amendment to—if a gun is not readily available, you know, and that really beats me. I don't understand that. I perfectly hear you. To—and to Mrs. Grossman on the issue of how we manage trees in a natural or semi-natural environment in our parks, I do think that leaving trees to rot, to decompose in habitat is a good practice, but I hear you very well that maybe we have to refine and look how to improve this practice. The pressure of invasives is one of the biggest challenges we have in our natural areas and natural preservation areas, and how to make sure that underscory and succession vegetation has chances to succeed and be plentiful. I do think that the Department of Fox and Rec is engaging actively in that, but there's also a very big community who does that, and I am confident that we will be improving on this as we go. We have dedicated quite some money into this, and I do think that it makes a difference already, but no, I hear you that more needs to be done.
And Mr. Dursey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Much has been said, and I associate myself with many of the comments, and thank you, Madam Chair, for particularly explaining the details of the involvement and the process at Barcroft. I do want to speak to just a couple of other dimensions that may not be well-understood, but first, a personal commentary. Mr. Coleman, thank you for reminding us all that public policy, even though it can involve a lot of details that may be beyond the interest or grasp of most people, need to be grounded in real concerns and actual outcomes. And, you know, as we've talked about zoning and all of its detail, I think that hopefully people understand that there are significant issues that the board is attempting to address. And while we may not be at the process where we are fully done, we are still working to make a policy that can reflect more reparative justice, but also to reflect some of the issues and concerns that we've heard about current environment and conditions. And so for all of you—for all of you who have a perspective, whether it be incredibly interested in or concerned about the Missing Middle zoning program, please stay engaged and do not believe that we are at the point where it can conclusively be determined to deliver anything, because we're not done. And so we welcome that engagement. Nothing to add to Barcroft. I did want to just add a couple of dimensions to Dr. Hillel's concerns about loans versus grants and Amazon in particular. You know, first of all, as it relates to the loans, it ought to be noted that these are below-market loans, so these are loans that are being provided by the county in the case of Barcroft or Amazon, in the case of their nearly billion dollars in our region that are below-market, what you could not get from a commercial lender. Secondarily, as it relates to grants versus loans, loans typically are able to be leveraged to a greater extent than grants. In other words, a loan dollar is able to either provide benefit for more people or deeper benefit for the same number of people as it relates—as it compares to grants. Another feature of loans versus grants are that grants can ultimately be turned into a windfall profit for an owner, whereas loans come with the level of conditions and structure that enable this to be a sustaining investment over time. And also with that, loans, obviously by nature of what they are, need to be returned at some point, which means those public dollars can be reinvested. So there is an intentionality behind loans typically being a huge part of how you go about housing development. Doesn't mean there's not a place for grants, and those are particularly helpful when you're trying to deepen levels of subsidy and affordability. I'm certainly—hopefully, people are aware that Arlington uses both tools as part of our strategy to help people get housed, both grants and loans. As it relates to the concerns about traffic and danger zones, you know, certainly, we do have those concerns, but unfortunately, as we began this meeting and as we've mentioned at the previous meeting, we have fatal and serious incidents that occur in low-density areas of our community, and the correlation between density and negative outcomes with traffic, while I understand the thought process, it actually doesn't play out in reality. So it's not a straight line. And as we know, if we are going to think about how to make our community safer, there are many, many, many more tools and many, many more places where those strategies need to be employed. And as it relates to Ms. Grossman's comments, I'll just ask—if you haven't already, hopefully you are sharing that info. you are sharing that information with DPR as the operational stewards at our park, it's a little bit less effective to wait until you have an opportunity to present the board. If you see those concerns in real time, I would encourage you to make sure that DPR is made aware of them as soon as possible. And that's really a plea, really, for everyone who enjoys our public spaces and parks in Arlington County. If you see conditions, please be our eyes and ears, help us out. Government can be everywhere at all times, and if you see things, dangerous conditions where trees are dead, could jeopardize the health of other trees if they fall, let us know. If you see unsafe paths, let us know. And while I certainly appreciate, I think we all do, the public education that we can get at a board meeting, better yet, if those concerns can be raised to the people who can operationally deal with them much more quickly. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Dorsey, and thank you all, colleagues, as well as those who've joined us this morning. We're going to move now into our regular business, beginning with the consent agenda. And thank you again for joining us this morning. We do ask for your partnership in reserving any conversations until you get out of the room, so we can keep moving, but it's really nice to see everyone this morning. Okay, so we will move next to our consent agenda. Ms. Jacobs, have any items been pulled from our consent agenda?
Just one second, I'm sorry. Hold on a second. Yes, item number four A, items one through 20 have been pulled, related to the Clarendon Live Entertainment Group.
Okay, thank you so much. So, we will hear those items on Tuesday evening. I am looking, colleagues, for a motion.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. So, the motion to clarify is for the adoption of the approval of the consent agenda minus items for, for A, one through 20. All right, unless there is any further discussion, I believe we're ready for a motion on that vote. All those in favor, could you please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that carries unanimously. I believe we have just one item to highlight from our consent agenda before we move on. We, of course, have just voted to approve dozens of items, minor site plan amendments, use permit requests, ordinance amendments, advertisements, and more. They are on consent, not because they aren't, because they are non-controversial, but that doesn't mean they aren't important. So, I want to take a few minutes to just highlight one item in particular I am so excited about. This is a long time coming. Arlington Independent Media is moving to Four Mile Run, in particular, to Theater on the Run, or the 3700 South Four Mile Run Drive facility. This represents the fruition, I think, of years of conversation. The action that we just took supports their move by granting them studio and office space, signing, they'll be signing a lease at the Four Mile Run Studio. That's going to allow Arlington Independent Media to continue the work as a community media center. For those who are not familiar with AIM, they are a powerhouse when it comes to providing media education and training, bringing independent news, art, music, and entertainment to Arlington. This is also really exciting, because I think this move to South Four Mile Run Drive is really consistent with and in furtherance of the vision of arts and industry in this corner of the county, adopted and prioritized in the Four Mile Run Valley Area Plan. So, we are really looking forward to this partnership with AIM. I want to particularly thank Mr. Karen Tonas, who I know has been working hard on that, as well as our manager. Did you want to add anything?
And they are also the operator of WERA 97.1.
That's right. So, you know, for those who are tuning in, if you want something even more interesting than a board meeting, you do have local radio featuring all kinds of wonderful community voices. All right, thank you so much. So, with that, I think we are prepared to move on to our regular agenda. Madam Clerk, could you call our first item?
Yes, our first item is item number 34, it's a presentation of the 2023 General Assembly Package for the County Board's Annual Public Hearing on the Proposed General Assembly Session Priorities.
Thank you so much. I believe I'm looking to our manager to introduce our lead staff members.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Alana Krennen is here to make a presentation on the 2023 General Assembly Package. We all wait eagerly.
Good morning, Ms. Krennen, and welcome.
Okay, now it's on. Great. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for having me today. As you will see, I have a slide presentation to walk through the state legislative package for the 2023 General Assembly Session. Again, my name is Alana Krennen, and I am the legislative liaison for the county. Next slide, please. All right, thank you. Before I dive into our package, I'm just going to give a brief overview of the upcoming 2023 session. It begins on Wednesday, January 11, 2023, and this year is what we call a short session, so it is only 45 days long. There will not be a new two-year biennial budget adopted this year, instead, there will be budget amendments to the adopted budget from last year that was signed in June. We're expecting about 2,000 bills. Because it is a shorter session, there are bill limits per patron that each person may introduce. The House has limited each patron to 15 bills. The Senate has limited each patron to 25 bills. And finally, we're expecting that virtual participation option for the public again this year. Last year was the first year where they had both in-person public participation and virtual participation. All members will need to be in-person at the Capitol for committee meetings and floor sessions, but there will be likely an option for that public participation to be virtual. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so this year, guiding our legislative package, we're introducing four different, what we're calling legislative principles. And as I mentioned, those will kind of guide our approach and our engagement strategy for our legislative priorities this year. The first is to make government more efficient, and by that, we mean to streamline state and federal processes, to account for local constraints on staffing, and to strengthen our resource pipelines for filling all of our staff positions. The second theme of our legislative principles is to fully fund commitments to local government. We know that the state government promises to, you know, support our services and staffing for local government, and so we are asking them to ensure that they fully pay for these promises before funding new additional priorities. Third, we want to maintain intent throughout the legislative process, which means to uphold the integrity of this process and to value the importance of amending code sections while not distorting the intent of these code sections. And finally, we are supporting economic development and recovery by making sure we expand our state funding, lower vacancy rate in office buildings, and grant any additional funding to promote tourism and recovery from this pandemic. Next slide, please. Now, I'm going to delve into our actual package, and I have some highlights from each section. So, the first section is the human services and healthcare. As we know, we're still going through a large mental health crisis in our state with both staffing shortages and also a lack of state hospital beds, so we want to work towards solving this crisis. We also want to make sure that reproductive health services are accessible by everyone, as well as ensuring that LGBTQ plus identifying individuals are given their rights and that their rights are preserved. Next up, we have our land use and housing section, and we want to make sure that there is still support for affordable housing in the Housing Trust Fund, as well as giving tenant rights the ability to improve their living standards and conditions. For finance, we want to make sure we still have local flexibility, as well as there is a codified revenue replacement for our sales tax on groceries, which will be reduced this upcoming January. And with that, also comes a loss of codified revenue replacement for both education and transportation. We want to make sure that we still have revenue streams coming in for those funding areas. All right, for transportation, we are focusing on speed cameras and the ability to have more authority in beyond just work zones and, and school zones. We know today, obviously, we talked a lot about our Vision Zero strategy, so making sure that we get more authority in relation to speed cameras to help our strategy continue moving forward, as well as we want to support funding for our Metro and the Virginia Railway Express. In our criminal justice reform section, we want to make sure that we are supporting sexual and gender-based violence on any opportunities to continue to combat any of these crimes, including human trafficking, intimate partner violence, sexual assault, and stalking. And also, we are expecting a marijuana bill this year again, to be determined if it will pass, but we want to make sure that any legislation remains consistent with our local revenue, our land use, public health, and safety priorities. Lastly, we have our education component, which we want to make sure that our teacher pay raises do occur without that local match, as well as we continue to bolster youth mental health in schools. Our last slide, next slide, please, to walk through the rest of the package. So, for general government, again, last year, we had our electronic meetings for public bodies. We made some headway in allowing our local boards and commissions to meet virtually. This year, we hope to expand that authority, as well as we would support no unfunded mandates. In our public safety category, we want to continue supporting additional staffing abilities for our jails and our police departments, and our fire, and EMS, and all of our public safety organizations that are having some staffing shortage issues, as well as any jail diversion efforts. And then, for swatting, we want to make sure that we're able to combat the acts, the act of making a hoax communication to 911. We've seen in some of our schools, there's been some, an uptick in incidences of people calling in these false communications. And finally, we have our energy and environment. We want to make sure we're protecting that Virginia Clean Economy Act, we're protecting our regional greenhouse gas emission policies that were passed back in the 2020 and 2021 sessions. And finally, we want to make sure we're preserving and expanding our tree canopy. That is it for the actual package itself. If we go to the next slide, I'm going to talk a little bit about how we developed this package. We consulted with our county board commissions and our county manager advisory groups, as well as our county staff, our lovely county board members, and members of the community. We are going to have a public comment period after my presentation concludes, and we're welcoming any additional comments before we come back for adoption at the December meeting, as well as there will also be a work session with our General Assembly delegation. And that brings me to our final slide, which is a quick timeline of what we can expect for the next few months. So, as I mentioned, that county board and legislator work session will take place on December 6. Following, we will have the legislative package considered for adoption at the December 17 Board Meeting. Session will then begin on January 11. The last day to file bills will be two days after session, as it has always been, which is January 13. Then, both the Senate and the House will work on their legislative business, which will hit February 3, which is about the date of crossover, which means any bills that have been in one body now cross to the other legislative body, and the process continues. And then, hopefully, signee die, which is the, the end of the 45 days, will be on February 25. And then, as always, we come back in mid-April for that reconvene session for the governor to give any vetoes and amendments to bills. That will conclude my presentation. I welcome any questions from the board members or any comments, and thank you again so much for having me.
Thank you so much, Ms. Krennen, and thank you for all of the work that went into the packages you've summarized for us. I believe we have at least one commission representative to speak, so we'll invite you to give remarks first before we open for general public comments. Welcome, Chair McIntyre.
More than just Chair McIntyre, Chair, or?
Oh, we got to turn you on there. There we go, success.
Great. Good morning, and I'm Joan McIntyre, Chair of the Climate Change, Energy, and Environment Commission. Overall, we really support the legislative package, and we appreciate that the county reflected, more or less reflected, the priorities that we had included in our legislative letter. As we had mentioned in the letter, clearly, the priority has to be protecting the gains made through the Virginia Clean Economy Act and Virginia's participation in the regional greenhouse gas initiative, as well as some of the other gains that were made in 2020 and 2021. And we definitely very much support the counties and appreciate the county staff and the boards, as well as our legislative delegation of really holding firm on any backtracking in these areas. That said, I would suggest some language change in the third item that would reflect more clearly the need for legislative action to advance the county's ability and authority to work with the private sector to advance our climate and energy goals. Language could be such, something like, expand the ability and authority of local jurisdictions to encourage and support private sector efforts to improve energy efficiency, reduce fossil fuel use, and shift to renewable energy. Such measures include, but are not limited, to local and regional green banks, improved stretch building codes, electrical vehicle infrastructure, and local commercial building efficiency benchmarking. Many of the details of what type of legislation is included were included in some of our past letters. We did not go into detail this year, but for reference, you can get more information on that. And finally, I would suggest that changing the title of that section to read Climate Change, Energy and Environment, where, you know, it's important, well, it seems minor, I think it's important to continue to continually acknowledge that we are facing a climate crisis and that we do need immediate action. So, thank you very much. Oh, and the other is, we do support the more flexibility on virtual meetings, I think commissioners would definitely appreciate that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right, I believe we do have a public speaker or two on the side. If we could turn to our clerk to call those speakers.
We do, we have one public speaker, Dave Schultz.
Good morning and welcome, Mr. Schultz. If you could just tap the button, there we go. Nope.
I'm Dave Schultz. The reason I'm speaking on the legislative package is in support of the ranked choice voting discussion, which will come on item 35. I would like to see added to the legislative package a request from the legislature for changes in the Arlington form of government, which would enable the, the kind of changes sought in the Civic Federation Tiger proposal. And this can include, and this could be by county board decision or by referendum, it can include number of members, it can include the length of terms, can include whether primaries are available for school board, whether the county could decide not to have primaries, but simply to go to a general election by ranked choice. How many county board staff are directly, can directly report to you, that's controlled in the form of government, it ought not be. And the length of term and this, and whether the terms are staggered. I expect there will be a community process going forward to enrich the, the discussion from the Tiger, and it should be able to, once a community consensus is attained, it would be nice if Arlington could put it in place rather than waiting for another couple of legislative sessions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming in and for the ongoing conversation on that. All right, no other public speakers, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so, the conversation is with the Board, although I'll note, we do not have any action today, so not looking for a motion. This can be an opportunity for us to give any feedback to Ms. Krennen that we'd like as she finalizes what will come before us for a vote next month, but there's no obligation to, to, to reach a final version that we're voting on today. Mr. DeFrenti, if you'd like to begin?
Sure, thank you. Just a couple of, given that this is, we'll, we will see this again, just a couple of kind of thoughts that I'll follow up on afterwards. One is, I think, Ms. Krennen, you've been working quite a bit on trees, and there's, we got a letter from one of our commissions. It's difficult because it isn't, I think, we share as a board this big effort to get into law the authority we want, but sometimes, fighting the hardest might not be, might be strategically smart to not highlight, or to be, be smart about how we, we fight. And I know you've worked really hard with our tree advocates to, to keep them updated. The thought occurs to me that maybe there's ways in which we, as a board, can support your effort to keep folks informed in the right ways, and all of the ways we can, but also continue to be strategic about how, because it's the result that we want, not necessarily the loudest in committee objections or efforts. You can be smart about then trying to work with legislators. That's one thought that I'll, I'll hope to follow up on, and I hope it's helpful to our public. We heard from Mr. Klingelhofer, Chair Klingelhofer, on that issue. And then the others, I'd like to just, I appreciate the efforts on tenants' rights, there are two provisions in particular that came in that I had not seen in terms of, or had not focused on. One is, and I want to see if they're possible, one is the planning commission's recommendation that at least it's reduced or removed the members of the plan, of the, of a planning commission in general that have to be owners of real property. I know that could be difficult, but I do think it's important, as we are inclusive of homeowners and renters as part of our work. homeowners and renters as part of our work. And then I don't know, similar question about mutuality of attorney's fees brought to us by our tenant landlord commission. I'm not sure necessarily that those can pass, but I wonder if we can be thoughtful about coalitions we might build to try and move those two forward. And then I also will want to be looking a little bit and engaging with you and colleagues on the suggestions from Mummy Ibrahim, our independent police auditor. I know this is a challenging area to get through the legislature, but I wonder if there are ways in which we can be thoughtful, and we've got some recommendations there. I'm not committed to futile efforts, but I am interested to see if there's ways we can move forward that effort. So that's a lot for effectively an RTA, but I hope that's helpful.
The purpose of this conversation, I'm so glad that you raised all those, and I certainly associate myself in being compelled by the recommendations from Mr. Klingelhofer and the Urban Forestry Commission with regard to tree canopy. And I know, I particularly appreciated their emphasis in their letter on something that we have strived to do in the past, I think dating back a few years, and I know Ms. Krainen is seeking to continue the tradition of which is work with other jurisdictions who have the same issues when it comes to tree protection, particularly in the redevelopment of private property by right. That remains, I think, really our Achilles' heel in being able to further our urban canopy, tree canopy goals. I wanted to just flag one thing myself, which I believe is on Ms. Krainen's radar already. Right now, the Transportation Section D5 references speed cameras, which I am glad to see. This has been embraced by the Virginia Municipal League about expanding that authority beyond just school zones and work zones. But I also think, and as Ms. Krainen herself was intimating in her remarks, this is, of course, a much bigger issue. We had a really productive meeting with Delegate Rome and our transportation, engineering, and operations and Vision Zero staff just last week, based on her interest to try to create a state fund for particular transportation safety projects, which would, of course, be meaningful to our work in Arlington and we know around the Commonwealth. And so I think it'd be great if we could broaden that category to really indicate that Vision Zero is a state priority, as well as a local one, that we support expansions of funds that can be used for that purpose, as well as any expansions of authorities that might be able to help us in furtherance of those goals. All right. I think I saw Mr. Dorsey next, and Mr. Karantos, and back to Ms. Garvey.
Yeah, thank you. I always look forward to this period of time where we get people to engage on this and get further suggestions and refine and ultimately adopt. And in December, I'll just say overall, won't really say much about the packages presented. I think it represents a balance of what we can reasonably expect to be our sort of offensive agenda, if you will, but I do note that we'll probably spend a lot of the session playing some defense to ensure that we don't have rollbacks on some gains that have been made in recent years. Mr. Schultz, I'd just like to speak to your issue because it's actually a really big issue, and the idea of allowing Arlington County to have a variety of options and abilities to either on its own initiative or by referendum operate in our community is something that I would love. Do recognize that Virginia is organized as a Dillon's rule state, and that's difficult to achieve. And one of the things that is interesting, I think if your strategy or your hope is that these be authorities granted to all Virginia localities, I think that's one thing. I won't give it any likelihood of success, but to me, that's the approach, as opposed to trying to do something for Arlington specifically, because as you all know, our counties, our communities are organized, you know, either by charters or not, but the general assembly expressly dictates what might happen within each of those plans or forms of government. And you open up the opportunity for the general assembly to provide one thing, but also changing other things. You actually haven't achieved your goal, which is to unleash the locality's ability to do what it wants. And so, you know, hopefully, your approach, your interest is more attuned to a broadside attack on Dillon's rule, as opposed to finding ways for Arlington specifically to be granted some new authorities, because that can come with it some unique challenges. So I'll look forward to talking with you on that.
Thanks so much. All right. Mr. Karantos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Indeed, Mr. Dorsey, isn't it every, in every legislative database, we, the second thing, Arlington County authority on Dillon rule? So, and, you know, what should be good for us should be good for everybody else, and this opens indeed a very, very, very big process of change in Virginia as a state. I want to thank Ms. Krainen for the work. Last year, we had 49 items under these nine rubrics. This year, we have 42. 10 items dropped from last year. Half of that was more or less related to the pandemic. We had some legislative successes, to your point. So, you know, it's a good thing to remember that we wanted things and we actually got some done and approved. Equal taxing authority, for example, or the ability of law enforcement to act against excessively noisy vehicles, or increased per diems for the jail, et cetera. So thanks to our collaboration and hard work of our Arlington delegation down in Richmond, we got some, we made some progress. So, and I'm very happy to see, you know, a list of seven new items, ranging from the protection for our LG BTQ+ residents. I see again a push to achieve, you know, better consumer protection against towing and predatory towing in our region. We are investing in traffic safety, public safety, et cetera. So one thing that I wanted to ask you, because I'm missing that, so the Tech Commission, our Technology Advisory Commission, mentioned in their input that they would like to see us advocating for participating in statewide cybersecurity infrastructure, in, you know, in cloud services that are covered by state and the federal government in terms of cybersecurity, given that this is really a very hot topic and a huge liability right now for many localities. Did we have any initial discussion about that, or is it something that we should be discussing from now to December?
Thank you for your question about the statewide cybersecurity infrastructure. I think that in our locality and some of the other larger localities, more urban localities as well, it's definitely a conversation to consider working with our regional partners on. I think the rest of the state may not be there yet, right? We still have the broadband infrastructure that we finally got last mile broadband for many of these rural communities. They're still building that out. There's still, some of these counties are really small, or the jurisdictions are, they're focusing on actually building that broadband. So I think this might be a conversation for a year or two from now, to really make sure that everyone has the resources they need to then have everyone be very supportive of this initiative as well.
Thank you. To be honest, actually, this is to the, you know, bigger or, you know, more affluent localities like we are. We can afford a completely different level of cybersecurity protection than less affluent counties, so it's actually their interest in participating there, if the state and the federal government actually provides this kind of infrastructure, protected and certified infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Garvey.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Krainen. I've got, actually, kind of, I was trying to organize a couple of things to say. It's just a grab bag of items. First, on your cover page, which I think is great, the fully funded commitments to local government, and I think this is fine to say it, but as you know, I love it the way, I think it's Billy Keiger of Rockingham County says, "The state needs to pay its debts." I mean, the state has contracted a lot of debts, and they're not paying them. And sometimes I think we're so polite in how we phrase things, the point doesn't get across, so I don't know if we want to kind of put that out a little more, obviously, so people kind of, you know, our general public hears it, that states committed to do a lot of things, and it's not. That's what their debts, and they're not paying them. So we could maybe be a little clearer in how we say things sometimes. On the maintain intent, which is very interesting, are you, is that, we used to always have "maintain local control." Is this sort of the maintain local control? Is that part of it? Because I think sometimes we're liable to get into the code, mess with something, and suddenly we find we've had some control taken away. Is that kind of the point here?
That is a little bit of the point. I think the other, like, concept, and this is something like we saw last year for Loudoun County, for example. They went in to, David Reed carried a bill to help with their, like, school board elections, and what ended up happening was, when the bill went to the governor, it came back with amendments that were completely different than the initial intent of the bill. And so what I'm, I guess what I'm trying to get at here is, anytime you open up a code section, you are basically able to really change anything in that code section if you so choose. Now, is that the smart move? Some might say yes, some might say no, but what I'm trying to get at is, if you open up, let's say, code section 12 to amend something about cats and dogs, then you're not all of a sudden adding rabbits and lions and bears as well. So that's kind of, I know that's a very simple analogy, but the point is, is that if you open a code section to amend one thing, that you're sticking to what that is that you're amending and not adding additional features to it.
Yeah, good point. Be careful what you ask for, because you can get in big trouble. I don't know if we want to add on here. I mean, I always liked having the "maintain local control." It seemed like such a, like you don't even have to say it, but I think actually we do. So anyway, I would suggest we might think about putting that specifically, specifically out there, which brings me a little bit to Mr. Schultz's comments on local control. I'll associate myself with everything that Mr. Dorsey said and invite Mr. Schultz perhaps to have a conversation. The Tiger Group is interesting. They've been working for years on local government and control, and nobody's ever talked to me. I don't know if they've talked to anybody here at this table, but, you know, we usually try to have, talking to stakeholders, this is not for you, Ms. Krainen, excuse me, I'm not talking to Mr. Schultz, but I'd be real happy to talk to the group. I've been local government pushing three decades now, and I have a few thoughts that I would love to share in another kind of format at some point, and would be happy to do that. So thank you for coming and bringing up the point. And then last, Ms. Krainen, I don't know that we want to do that, but it's been striking me more and more, the issue of virtual meetings, it kind of bleeds into other things. It's under general government, but actually, it's for the environment, it's so much better for the environment for people to be able to do things virtually and not all get in the car and drive somewhere, which I realize after the pandemic, I spent a lot of my time doing, and really spending a lot of gas and putting out a lot of greenhouse gases. So we could kind of fit in there as well, and it, sometimes maybe to make the point, we could even pop it in a couple of different places, because it just, it's one of these things that seems like a small thing, but it makes so much sense. I love getting together in person. This is great. It's nice to have people here on occasion and do that, but it also, there are times where I find myself getting in the car and taking a long drive, and I really don't think that I should need to be doing that, and I don't think it's good for anybody, including yours truly, as well as the environment. And I think that's it for the moment. Thank you so much, Ms. Krainen.
Thanks, Ms. Garvey. I just wanted to discuss it myself, and then I'm going to turn to Mr. DeFrenti for motion. Your comments about the state's paying its debts, I was thinking about that, Ms. Krainen, when you were mentioning the priority that we have, which is that this state, we strongly support teacher salary increases without the local match. And it occurs to me, somebody seeing that in the abstract might make it seem like we don't want to give teachers raises, and in fact, the reality is, our colleagues at APS with our support have given teachers significant raises, and the problem with these local matches is that we are already shouldering because of the standards of quality, the state both pays, both defines the needs lower than what they actually are, so we're paying full freight of all of the needs above that, as well as underfunds its own share. So when we say salary raises without local matches, it's because we have already well exceeded and multiple times over any potential local match, so I'm glad you made that point.
Thank you. No, I find the state, which I've been doing for a long time, they're so clever at how they phrase things, and it's so complicated. And when you get down to the bottom, you realize, oh my God, we've been snookered again, if you will, but it's really hard then, it makes it hard to get across to people, and maybe sometimes hard to get the kind of good government we need to have when it's so unclear, so thank you for that.
Thanks so much. Mr. DeFrenti, I'm going to look to you for a motion. I lied when I said we didn't need to act. We need to act on one administrative matter, I suppose, but...
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just sneak in, associate myself particularly with Mr. Dorsey's remarks regarding being really thoughtful about the Tiger Group's recommendations. I'm interested in engaging there. I just want to be very thoughtful about how we do it. I will move to close the public hearing and carry over action to the December 17th meeting on this item.
All right. That has been moved by Mr. DeFrenti. I'm going to give the second to Mr. Dorsey. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. It carries unanimously to close the public hearing. We look forward to seeing you again, Ms. Krainen, next month as we formalize, and thank you and the community for all of your work. All right. Before we move to our next item, I have been notified by the clerk, it looks like we, when we did our consent agenda, we intended to include 4A and 4B as the items that were polled, but only announced 4A as the item polled. That's right?
That is correct. My apologies.
Okay. So procedurally, I am going to move that the board reconsider our vote, let's see. So, excuse me, our Gasco County Attorney, I need to move that the board vote to nullify our approval of the consent agenda.
Just 4B.
Just, oh, nullify our approval of 4B as part of the consent agenda, and instead move it to the recessed agenda for later consideration, hearing, and voting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. DeFrenti. No discussion needed, I don't think. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. That does not, I don't think substantively change what we plan to hear on Tuesday night. That will be the Clarendon Live Entertainment Group use permits, but that element of 4B will be included as well as 4A. All right. Without further ado, let's move to our next item. Will you call it, please, Madam Clerk?
Yes, our next item is item number 35, the endorsement of ranked choice voting as the election method for the June 2023 county board primary election and adoption of a request to advertise an ordinance change to effectuate this method.
All right. Normally, I'd turn to the manager, but in this case, I gotta do this thing myself. So I, as colleagues know, this has been a particular area of interest for me. The staff work here in particular, really credit above all goes to Amina Idbella, who's been just a fantastic partner in organizing the community engagement on this piece. As we pull up the sides result, about the results of the public engagement, I'll just make a couple of comments, which are all included, of course, in the board report, to note that this issue has been under discussion, and some of them are fashioned for over a year at this point. In 2020, January, it's January 2020 session, the Commonwealth of Virginia's General Assembly voted to enable ranked choice voting as an election method for county boards and city councils across the Commonwealth. That authority took effect in July of 2021 for a series of reasons I will not rehash here involving the complexities of the intergovernmental operations of our election system. It became most feasible for us to do it in the year ahead rather than last year, but really appreciated the engagement that my colleagues have had over the course of the last year. You all remember, in fall of 2021, we held a work session to discuss this method of voting, as well as a few other options related to the Electoral Board. And in August of 2021, the Arlington elections, as well as the Electoral Board, hosted some pretty terrific community outreach, including a mock election and Q&amp;A town hall style for voters to give some insight. We knew we wanted to hear from more Arlingtonians about their thoughts, and so we have put a, we put a public engagement form out in the field for about two months, and I am pleased to be able to share some of the results of those. I'm going to highlight maybe a couple of questions there, and I might invite our registrar, Gretchen Reiner-Meyer, if you wouldn't mind joining us, maybe at one of the tables up front. I'll highlight a few of these, the themes from public engagement. She will be available. I think we can probably best address some of these questions through discussion with the board after we receive comment today, but I am going to enlist her subject matter expertise in a few of these areas, but if we could, go ahead and launch in. One of the major things to note, we got lots of really good feedback and questions throughout that survey reform that were some variation of, wait, how does this work? And so before I launch into any of the themes, I just wanted to begin by highlighting a couple of resources to learn more. This presentation is available on the board website. We also had some of these resources available in the form itself. But to just note, before we launch any further, right, the way ranked choice voting essentially works is that candidates rank, their voters rank the candidates in their order of preference. Voters' first choices are tallied. If one candidate has an outright majority, they are the winner. If no candidate has an outright majority, the votes are re-tallied, which is to say, the candidate in the last place is eliminated, and their second choices, or the voter's second choices, for those who chose that candidate first, are redid. choices, for those who chose that candidate first, are redistributed, votes are re-tallied. Again, the cycle repeats. So that is ranked choice in a nutshell, and appreciated the opportunity to just kind of highlight that for those who maybe had written with some questions about how it worked. Again, great resources to learn more there. So what did we hear? We had 786 respondents to that feedback form. Sorry, I should clarify that it was not a survey, it was a feedback form. I know we sometimes talk with residents, a survey implies a formal instrument. It was not, it was a feedback form. We were really pleased to see, well, pleased because I support this, to see strongly favorable, about 75% of those who voted were either very favorable, and as you can see disproportionately very favorable, or favorable. If we go to the next slide, you can see that generally held across regions of Arlington County, ranging from a high of 88% favorability in ZIP Code 2203 to a low of 63% favorability in 22207. But I think it's fair to say that this is, enjoys a broad base of support throughout the county. So we asked people not just how they felt about ranked choice voting, we'll go to the next slide, but what their question, what kind of questions or comments they might have about it. They clustered around a few areas, and I'll highlight them now. We can go on to the next slide. Definitely some questions about kind of the partisan nature. What is before us today? The motion that I will make when I conclude this presentation, or after we hear public comments, rather, is to pilot this in the June 2023 primaries for county board, and we got definitely some feedback on both sides. Folks who are strongly supportive of doing this in primaries but not general, we got a lot of feedback from people who would love to see us do this all now to adopt for primaries as well as general elections, or questions about if this is successful in a primary, what is the path to do this, adopt it in general as well. There were questions about whether the political parties, the two major political parties in Arlington had weighed in. Can tell you, as part of the engagement, I've spoken to individual leaders within those two parties, neither party has kind of formally taken a vote, but generally the sense that I've gotten from leaders is, speaking at least for themselves, is that they are supportive of doing this in primaries but have questions about doing it in general elections. We also heard some interesting questions and feedbacks about the idea of, you know, you can do primary, ranked choice voting in primaries to select your party nominees that then run in a general election that is either ranked choice or not. There is also, as we've seen in some places, the adoption of partisan versus nonpartisan primaries, sometimes called jungle primaries, which feels like a slightly offensive term, but I've yet to find a better one, right? Where everyone runs all at once, essentially becomes a runoff. So some thoughts and questions from residents about those as well. Again, those are not on the table or not proposed today, but I think could be part of ongoing conversation within the community. Lots of good questions about the technology and how it works, and I'm going to ask Ms. Renner-Meyer to weigh in once I've concluded about thoughts on kind of, well, how, how does testing and quality control work maybe for a voting system now? And would that change under ranked choice voting? Does there need to be different auditing of the software? How do we validate ranked choice voting? Does that change relative to how we currently vote? Are additional election security measures required? We certainly heard from some residents, you know, keeping an eye on this issue of election security nationally, which has unfortunately emerged as kind of a polarizing issue. We are incredibly fortunate in Arlington. I'll take the opportunity to shout out our Electoral Board and entire Arlington election staff in having a track record of very secure elections. So definitely some questions about, you know, whether we can ensure that will continue to be the case. Costs to change the system and taxpayer impact. I will speak briefly to this now. You can see that in the board report, the fiscal impact section is a little complicated. The bottom line is it depends. We know that Arlington Elections is currently evaluating whether the replacement of our voting machines needs to occur in 2023 or in 2025, based on some of the end of life signs that are starting to present in our current system. The adopted capital improvement plan does provide funding for replacement of those systems in fiscal 2025. There is some question about whether that might be, need to be moved up to fiscal 2023, again, based on kind of the natural age of those machines. I will note that our current machines support ranked choice voting for up to three choices. I think it is fair to assume that if we pass this resolution today and more than three candidates emerge for the 2023 primary, there will certainly be interest in ranking more than those. It will not be the deciding factor for the replacement of machines, but to be transparent, it would also be a factor. So again, it's not a new expenditure, there's no new taxpayer impact, but there will be some conversations likely ahead about expediting the replacement of those voting machines. Ranked choice voting, again, would be a factor, but not the sole factor in that conversation. Lots of good questions about the timeline for education and engagement. I am again going to ask Ms. Renner-Meyer to speak to, you know, what voter engagement looks like in general and plans for the Electoral Board and Arlington Elections, to talk to voters about what this change might look like and how the county board and county government can help. Got some interesting questions and feedback about the pace of adoption, including a few comments essentially saying we should have done this yesterday, and a few comments saying we should slow our roll and maybe not adopt this for another few years. So a range of opinions on that one, if we can go to the next slide. Lots of good questions about why do this, who would benefit from it, and I'll have a concluding slide with our own thoughts about the equity analysis here. You know, definitely some interest in whether this could have an impact on engagement or turnout. Fair number of questions about, do we have the authority to do this? Or why could we not do this for other offices? For example, state delegates who might be on the ballot, and those come back to the code section, which empowers us to do this now for local offices only. There were definitely some questions about transparency, again, that sort of related to the expansion to general elections and other offices, desire to be, have greater clarity about how that decision might be made, and then, you know, framing this as a pilot versus full adoption there, too. Finally, and again, I'm highlighting this as an area where I'm going to ask Ms. Renner-Meyer to weigh in, questions about how resort, results get reported, the tabulation, the rounds, will this slow down the reporting of elections? What might change if there need to be recounts in Arlington? So lots of good questions in those areas. If we go on to the next slide, just some, again, additional themes and comments. These were largely comments made in support of ranked choice voting. Again, 75% of the comments were in support, so most of those comments, or participants were in support, so most of those comments fall under supportive. Interest in improving the greater diversity of candidates and representation of different parties. Again, that kind of recurring theme, how will we know if this is going to be used in the general election? A desire to make sure that outreach is really sensitive to, you know, communities who may have historically been disenfranchised by or struggled with fully participating, in terms of those, you know, who are multilingual, who have vision and hearing impairments, and otherwise kind of lower historical participation rates. And again, positivity about fairer elections and more positive campaigning as a result of ranked choice voting. Definitely a desire for making sure this is communicated in a way that is clear and straightforward, and voters understand. And that is a great note to sort of wrap up the feedback on, you know, one of the things, I'm now switching into editorializing mode, but, you know, lots of comments and themes about, you know, just making sure people understand what this is, and that nobody is disenfranchised in casting their ballot because they don't understand the new system. This is a great opportunity to note, there is actually no wrong way to vote a ranked choice voting if voters show up and they don't understand how that works. Our voting, our outreach efforts have not been successful, and they cast a vote the way they normally do, which is to say, just vote for one candidate. Their vote is still counted. So this is not a high-risk proposition where people's ballots will be thrown out. We hope everybody will exercise the benefits of ranked choice voting should we adopt it, which is the ability to rank multiple candidates. But even if, you know, we have, we are, we are not able to fully reach everyone, their votes for the candidate of their preference will still be counted and still matter. So a final slide here. We also tried to think about this through an equity lens. Candidly, the research is mixed, right? This has been in effect in different communities. We have some kind of natural experiments of pre-post, but, but no one's been able to run, you know, a randomized control, for example, on an election, both ways to really be able to say definitively. Nevertheless, there is some research indicating that ranked choice voting can lead to higher win rates as well as higher vote totals for candidates of color, and some research indicating that voters of color are actually more likely to rank more candidates than white voters do, which suggests that potentially greater engagement with the ranked ballot is of interest to BIPOC communities. Thinking about this as well as who is burdened, again, if outreach and education isn't effective or sufficient, there are voters who may cast only one vote, their vote won't be invalidated, but they won't be able to exercise their full ability to rank candidates. And then we also know, you know, that ranked choice voting, you see the rounds tabulate, and for those candidates who might lead in the first round and ultimately do not win, supporters that candidate reasonably might feel, you know, disenfranchised by the ranked choice voting system relative to a traditional choose-one election. So I believe that we have one more slide? Final slide? Okay, so I'm going to wrap up there with my comments. I think what I'm going to do is invite our public speakers in the event that we have more questions raised. I will then go to Ms. Renner-Meyer to do a little bit of back and forth about some questions that we've heard raised and then make a motion. So I'm going to turn it to our clerk to call our speakers, please.
Okay, just one moment, Madam Chair. Just have a moment to change screens here.
No problem.
Okay, our first speaker is Krista Rosa, followed by Adam Theo.
Welcome, Ms. Rosa.
Good morning. My name is Krista Rosa. I'm a longtime resident of Arlington. Thank you for allowing me to participate today. I'm here to ask your support of this proposal to use ranked choice voting in the 2023 county board primaries. Ranked choice voting will help to strengthen our democracy, and in these two minutes, I see, I will let you know about two key benefits that I see. First, RCV will ensure that the eventual winner will have the support of the majority of Arlington voters, not just a plurality. Second, the use of ranked choice voting in countywide party primaries will allow all Arlingtonians to participate in the endorsement or election process. They can vote throughout the 45-day early voting period, in person or via mail-in ballot, as well as on Election Day at their neighborhood precinct. This would provide more opportunities for voters to have their say, many, many more voting days and locations than the current party caucus process provide. And voters, not just party insiders, would also help to determine the winner. I would love to see Arlington become the first jurisdiction in the Commonwealth to opt to use ranked choice voting in a county board election. If this proposal to use RCV in the 2023 county board primary election is approved, I hereby pledge my support, and I promise to do all I can to help educate voters about ranked choice voting and show them how to mark their ballots in that election. And if all goes well, I will return to encourage you to extend the ranked choice voting option to the November 2023 general election, and perhaps in the future, to consider final four ranked choice voting. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rosa.
Our next speaker is Adam Theo, followed by Liz White.
Good morning, everyone. Adam Theo here. So with ranked choice voting, I'm very interested in it. I've been looking forward to this for probably a good three years now. So for Arlington County to finally be picking it up makes me very excited. Thank you. I look forward to not only the pilot run in the primaries, but also for it to be implemented in the general elections. I am most excited about ranked choice voting for how it more accurately represents the will of the people. We no longer have to fear that someone winning with, say, a certain percentage in the primaries and then sort of automatically winning in the general election for more or less. We can have multiple candidates running, and the voters get to decide which one represents that 50% plus one that they truly like and can feel that they represent them on the county board or in any local election. The problem with ranked choice voting is, of course, it is more complex than our current system. It's going to take a lot of education and a lot of outreach for the voters to feel comfortable using it. Using it or piloting it in the primaries is a good first step, but the obligation also falls on civic organizations here in Arlington County to help start that process of educating the voters. So right here, I know that the county board is in front of me, but my message is to my fellow civic leaders and civic organizations to do what they can to start the process of educating and even incorporating ranked choice voting in their own civic organization processes. Civic associations, civic federation, and other organizations do what we can now to implement ranked choice voting and use that as an opportunity to start educating and using ranked, and promoting ranked choice voting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Liz White, followed by Joan Port.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all today. My name is Liz White. I'm the Executive Director of Upvote Virginia. We're a nonpartisan democracy reform organization dedicated to elevating the voices of Virginia voters through education, advocacy, and grassroots mobilization. I can't think of a better way to elevate the voices of the voters here in Arlington than to move forward in support of ranked choice voting. It's a simple change to the ballot that enables better voter experience, better elections, and ultimately better government. During your recent online public comment period and at this hearing, you've heard a lot about the overarching benefits of RCV, but I'd like to take a moment to talk specifically about how democracy reform has built momentum here in Virginia and how today's vote could encapsulate that. In the last few years alone, Virginia has expanded access to absentee ballots, instituted automatic and same-day voter registration, and has established what experts agree are some of the fairest legislative maps in America. These aren't issues that benefit one party over another, they benefit voters. That's why both parties have embraced RCV here in Virginia. Even longtime political rivals have found common ground in support of ranked choice voting. At Upvote Virginia's launch event in August, we heard remarks in favor of RCV from your very own Democratic Congressman Don Byer and former Governor George Allen, a Republican. And it is not often that you get those two guys at the same event, speaking on the same side of an issue. So that really is, demonstrates how broad RCV's appeal can be. Today's vote would make Arlington the first locality in Virginia to take a concrete step toward adopting RCV. It marks a crucial step toward the culmination of many years of advocacy by nonpartisan reform organizations and advocates of good government alike. And on behalf of Upvote Virginia and our many partners, I want to express our appreciation to you for taking this step. It's not every day in Virginia that you have a chance to be first at something, but this resolution truly is a historic opportunity. Thank you again for your time today and for putting voters first.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Okay, our next speaker is Joan Porte? Port, okay, followed by Mike Cantwell.
For some reason, the heat has been silent for many a year. Don't know why. Good morning. My name is Joan Porte, President of the League of Women Voters of Arlington and Alexandria City. The League supports the implementation of ranked choice voting for many reasons. The League is, of course, a 102-year-old nonpartisan organization started as a mechanism to educate and register the women enfranchised by the 19th Amendment. We continue and always will support efforts to bring more people to the polls. Ranked choice voting empowers voters on many levels. First, it cuts down on negativity. If you have to rely on people supporting you as the second or third choice, you are less likely to bash the first choice they may have because you want them to like you. So wouldn't it be nice if we had fewer negative ads running? It encourages people also to research all the candidates because they'll be casting more votes. In the League, we believe that a more informed voter is a better educated voter and a smarter voter. Also, ranked choice voting saves money. Let's compare what happened this past week in Alaska and Maine to ranked choice voting states and Georgia, a non-ranked choice voting state. In each of them, there were three candidates on the ballot, and no one reached 50%. Maine has already allocated the third person's votes to the first two, and a winner has been declared. Alaska, a little bit bigger than Maine, second district, is still in the process of allocating, but they should have a winner within a matter of days. What's going on in Georgia? They have to have another very expensive special election statewide, and obviously people now have to take time out to come back to vote. That's why it's often called an instant runoff system. Also, this is another benefit as it eliminates election fatigue. We know this in Virginia. We are one of two states that have elections every year. It is known that forcing people to vote too often has a disenfranchising event because it lacks, they lacked voter enthusiasm after a while. It's like, another election. This also eliminates spoilers and strategic voting. Ranked choice voting allows voters to support their favorite candidate without worrying that they might that they might throw their vote away. It helps create a richer dialogue on the issues and increases diversity, both of views and of candidates. We applaud the county for this initiative, and the League stands ready to assist in the voter education necessary. It's what we do, and when this does become a reality, we will be there to support it in every way. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Porte.
Our next speaker is Mike Cantwell, followed by Dave Schutz.
Good morning. My name is Mike Cantwell. I'm the vice president of Fair Vote Virginia, the Virginia League for the Veterans for Political Innovation, and longtime Arlington resident. I'm here today to talk about ranked choice voting and why the county board should enact an ordinance for ranked choice voting for county board primaries and general elections. Exit polling shows that the supermajority of voters who use ranked choice voting like ranked choice voting, and they find ranked choice voting easy to understand. Ranked choice voting elections eliminate the spoiler effect, and they also ensure that the winning candidate has the majority of support of the voters. RCV elections also reduce toxic partisanship and increase civic discourse. Women candidates usually do better in ranked choice voting elections, as well as candidates of color. RCV elections ensure votes count if a candidate drops out of the race between the time that the ballots are printed and the election. This is very important for people who use mail-in ballots and military active duty who were deployed overseas. Most potential candidates are more encouraged to run because of the elimination of the spoiler effect. Most progressive Democrats support ranked choice voting elections, as well as most young Democrats also support ranked choice voting elections. Finally, extreme candidates outside the political mainstream are more likely to win traditional first-past-to-post elections, where RCV elections ensure the majority of support from the majority of voters. RCV ballot initiatives had a big night on Tuesday. Voters across the country voted in favor of RCV elections. Maine and Alaska held RCV elections to choose their senators, their representatives, and their state legislators. You are on the threshold of doing something bold and historic. I encourage you to take this bold and historic step and implement ranked choice voting for primaries and general elections. If Alaska can have ranked choice voting elections, why can't Arlington? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cantwell.
Our next speaker is Dave Schutz, followed by Alan Gadjohar.
Welcome back.
And I have much, much the same thing to say because it applies to both items. I want to climb in behind Mike Cantwell and talk about the lone nutball effect, which we have seen in a number of elections. If you have a plurality election and one candidate is really quite unusual, and all of the normal voters vote for a number of different, normal candidates, you will find someone who's really quite out of what is desired by the most voters getting a nomination or getting an election. This is something against which ranked choice voting protects you. I'm very happy to be here today to see you taking this step. I think it's an intermediate step towards a better system overall for Arlington. I would like to particularly note that our school board is elected usually based on the school board caucus, which has a tiny turnout. 6,000 voters is an awful lot of people for a school board caucus. And that person goes in with the blue ballot, usually wins. You really have very little idea what the 110,000 people who vote in Arlington really want from that caucus result. This is not a very democratic mechanism of getting these people into office. So I want to advocate for moving towards the whole tiger package or something very like it. I expect there'll be a community process to get from the tiger proposal to what Arlington ultimately seeks to do. I want to advocate for our seeking permission from the legislature to do that. Mr. Dorsey, I'm somewhat in disagreement with you. The history of ranked choice voting for Arlington is that Patrick Hope actually got a law through that allowed us to put in ranked choice voting. And only the next year did he and Sally Hudson manage to put through a law allowing this for the whole state. So there is a history of this being a successful mechanism, going for a specific Arlington change, and then moving from that to a statewide change in the statewide rules. I think that's it. I would like to see us get away from staggered terms. We really don't have... We are a one-party jurisdiction, and the only good way for our members to find out how they're doing relative to each other in serving the voter's will is through their running at the same time. I think I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Schutz.
Our next and final speaker is Alan Gadjohar.
Alan told me he might not be able to make it this morning.
Yes, and I do not see him on our team's meeting.
All right. Well, we thank him. I would not profess to speak for anyone, but I will know as part of my stakeholder engagement, I did speak to Mr. Gadjohar as well as Mr. Schutz about the thinking of the civic federation, which I think, as Mr. Theo noted, would be an important partner in education. So I appreciated his support in previous comments, although, again, I cannot speak for him today. All right. I think that concludes our public comments. What I'm going to do now is move the conversation to the board. I have been doing a lot of talking, so I have a couple of questions to tee it up for Ms. Reinemeyer. But colleagues, would you like to begin? Mr. DeFranti?
Sure. My question for Ms. Reinemeyer is on this... Just to understand, I'm supportive of moving forward with this step today, but I do want to understand more deeply the cost question that Chair Crystal mentioned. I think it's a little different if we are just moving up the time at which we purchase additional or new equipment, or if we are sort of incurring a new cost that I think at one point could have been in the millions, but maybe less now. So can you kind of tease out a little bit of what our chair shared on the cost?
Good morning. Thank you so much for having me. So obviously, the dust is still settling from the November 8th general election, and so I don't want to speak prematurely about voting system replacement. This is not something election directors take lightly anywhere in the country. So our current system does support ranked choice voting, but it only allows the ranking up to three choices. So first, second, and third, gold, silver, bronze, if you will. So with that said, we did budget, put in a capital request to look into replacing our current system in fiscal year 2025 because we do estimate about a 10-year lifespan on voting equipment. But like I said, we haven't thoroughly reviewed everything that came in from election date, but our equipment has had to go through several upgrades to help comply with some of the 88 new election bills that have been passed in the last three years. And I think most of us aren't using the same cell phone that we had 10 years ago. So we'll be completing a thorough evaluation to see if it might be time to consider, one, is there funding to escalate or accelerate the purchase of new equipment? Is there even equipment available? Because there is a global computer chip shortage, we might not even be able to get new equipment, even if we wanted to get new equipment. There are several different factors that we'll need to consider over the next eight weeks because that really is when the decision will have to be made. So...
Great. Yeah, that helps. I should have started where the chair started with a thank you for the process for the election. And so that I'm not sounding ridiculous, thank you to Mr. Theo for being involved in it. There are a lot of voters, which is a good thing. So that's helpful. I guess I might follow up to try and understand better whether our timing, because we have a month until December 17th. 90 days is the full, but that's a question that I'd like to learn a little bit more. I can 100% understand why since Tuesday. You may not have answered all these questions. Thanks.
All right. I think I saw Mr. Carentone, Mr. Dorsey, and then Ms. Garvey.
Thank you. First of all, Ms. Reinemeyer, what an amazing delivery on the last election and the election before that and the one before that. And every year, it becomes one of the nicest duties that we as citizens have here as residents to thank you for an excellently delivered election, safe, reliable, and undisputable. So I have a couple of questions that are technical. So with the adoption, if this board agrees to go ahead, are there any question marks about the method, the tabulation things? I mean, I've been observing that for a very long time, since it started in the 90s, late 90s, in San Francisco, and they adapted over time. So for example, you know, there was a... At the beginning, they started with a limited number of choices, then they extended, very recently actually, to a full number of choices. So how do we account for that, and how would this evolve over time?
So tabulation rules have been voted on by the State Board of Elections. They are included in the Administrative Code of Virginia, which carries the full weight of law. So all of the rules for tabulation in ranked choice voting, both in a single-vote office or in a multi-vote office like we'll have next year for county board, those have been set by the State Board at this point.
So we have still no full sovereignty on, you know, the way we tabulate. This is a State Board of Elections.
So the code section that authorizes localities to adopt ranked choice voting allowed the State Board of Elections to adopt rules governing the ranked choice voting elections, including tabulation rules, and the State Board of Elections did exercise their authority to adopt rules on tabulation. Once again, because those are adopted by the State Board of Elections, it's not the legislator. So it is possible that Arlington County could request that the State Board, if they wanted to, to revise some of those regulations. So I wouldn't say there's a loss of authority. It's just Arlington County would need to go to the State Board as opposed to the legislator.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you. Mr. Dorsey?
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding technically how this would work next year. So in the multi-candidate opportunity that would be the case for the primaries for county board next year, our machines would allow the ranking of how many?
Three. The current equipment we have allows for the ranking of three candidates.
Got it. Okay. And that would be the limit until such time as we were to change software machines?
Yeah. Or there is the option that our vendor might create a new release of the software that would allow more than three rankings. I don't believe that that will be possible before June of next year, but I do know that they are working on an upgrade.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Garvey?
Yeah, so I'll just continue the same path that Mr. Dorsey was on because I'm trying to clarify, too. So it sounds to me like next year for the primary, we won't be able to handle a ranked choice voting unless... I mean, with two seats up, even in a primary. So yeah, that's why I wanted to clarify. Let me clarify. Because with two seats up, I mean, there are going to be numerous candidates. So the ranked choice is going to require... We're going to have to have more than three slots. So either we buy new machines to be able to do it, or... So what do we need?
Yeah, this is one of the common misunderstandings when I say that you're allowed to rank up to three. That does not limit the number of candidates that can run for office next year. So it just means you'll have a list of 10 candidates, and you'll get to rank your candidates in first, second, or third.
And third. Okay. Okay.
And that all of the candidates would be listed in the same office. So normally, what you would see on the ballot is you'd see all the candidates listed under the Office of County Board, and then you would get to fill in two ovals for your two candidates. Now you'll see the list of the offices, and you'll have your first choice, second choice, and third choice, and you'll fill in the bubble underneath the ranking. So you'd rank three candidates of your preference.
That's great. That's really helpful. And then if... I'm not the only one that's confused, I assume.
No, it's a common question.
Yeah, thank you. And then I assume... So with ranked choice voting, so say there are like nine people running. With ranked choice voting, you'd then have to do nine separate... You'd have to go through for your first, second, third, fourth. How does it generally work? Or could you just decide, I'm going to do my first four, and then I just don't care about beyond that? How does it work?
So are you talking about in the terms of voters' ranking?
Yeah. So let's say we have the machine that can do everything.
Yeah.
That's an awful lot of ranking to do that people could easily just decide they're going to rank their top four or something, and then they're going to just let it go after that. That's probably typically what happens?
Yeah. So there is, in the tabulation rules adopted by the State Board of Elections, they do describe what should happen in the case of a skipped ranking. So once again, if we would just go through that voter's choices, and then if we got to the point where there were no other choices that that voter had voted on, and all of the candidates they had selected in their first four preferences, that ballot would become exhausted. So it'd be equivalent to an under vote now where somebody just didn't vote for the office.
Right. Thank you. And then, let's bring me back. So we are capable of handling three seats. So we could do this for the primary then because it was sort of sounding like we might not be able to. All right. That's great. I appreciate... I should also thank you. I mean, it's amazing. We just here in Arlington take for granted that the election's going to run smoothly and fine, and everything's going to be taken care of. I really appreciate it. I even, you know, was able to register my 94-year-old mother, who doesn't go easy, and have her vote and everything, and it was great. She was thrilled to be able to vote, and we didn't even have to, you know, try to move her around too much. So that was just great. Thank you. Really appreciate it. We can't thank you enough, actually. And I think even in wonderful Arlington that you probably get some nasty emails and some nasty things that you have to deal with that are not pleasant, and I thank you very much. I think people probably don't appreciate how hard your job is, and it's extremely important. So thank you. I thank our speakers for coming in. I think the election in Georgia is going to be a really good educational tool. This fact that we have to do it... I mean, I immediately started to think, oh, yeah, Georgia, we'd be done by now if they'd had ranked choice voting. And I think it's going to be expensive in so many different ways, not only for Georgians, but for some of us who are going to feel compelled to send some money. So this is... It's a really good educational tool. And then, you know, I think great to have organizations like the Civic Federation help us in things. I think we could do some really fun ranked choice voting. I don't know, apples, oranges, kumquats, grapes, or peaches? What do you like? What do you want to rank? I mean, I think there's some fun things that we could do. And I think... I'm also thinking it's not as confusing... It sounds confusing to explain, but when you actually do it, I think it's probably a lot clearer to people. So I don't think this is as heavy a lift as it might seem, although, again, I don't have to implement it, really. You would. So with all those questions, I'm totally in favor of doing this and maybe starting with primaries. I guess my last question is, my assumption now is that to do primaries, we've got to have machines that can do it, we've got to have the education out there, we're going to run through it, and then if we decide we want to do the general, what is the timeline to change and decide we want to do general? I guess for you, you would be set to do it once we've done it, and then it would be for our attorney.
So I can take that one, too.
Yeah, thank you.
So you'll note today, actually, that our action is a little bit unusual. As our county attorney's office reviewed again, the sort of difference between the state administrative code versus legislative code, as Ms. Reinemeyer suggested. They advised early this week that we would want to do this by ordinance rather than just resolution, as we had initially thought, which means advertising. So we are going to be advertising for December. My recommendation will be to really take this action as much as possible today, but formalize next month. So we would need to take an action, an advertisement, and then an action on an ordinance change 60 days before a general election, because that's what the law specifies, and any changes need to be made 60 days before an election. We've preferred to try to do even more than that, so there's plenty of time for voter education. So this is kind of a mix of what's feasible with the machines, which Ms. Reinemeyer has talked about, what's required legally, and then something of a determination for this board. In the interest of transparency suggests that I will probably be coming back to everybody to consider doing an advertisement in June. Our June meeting will be before the election results. But if we want to be able to consider doing this for the 2023 election, we would need to do an advertisement prior to that election so that we have the option for ourselves to take action in July. Because if we waited until after the June election to advertise, we couldn't take action until September. So that's my hope.
Thank you. No, that's exactly my question. I'd forgotten about the necessity of advertising, but that's fine. So we can advertise in June. If we try this for the primary... we can advertise in, if we try this for the primary, and we'll, we can advertise, and then if for some reason it doesn't go great, and it's a problem, we just don't adopt it. But presumably, it all goes smoothly, and then we adopt it at our July meeting, and we're good to go in November.
That's my hope.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeFranti?
I appreciate the additional dialogue that kind of steered us in a direction that I had already been thinking with respect to this motion and this action today. I am supportive, with one caveat, and it's a question. I'd like to engage not with many of the advocates here on the three out of 10 question. I assume, but assumptions can, you know, there's a saying about assumptions, how they even make, look, make you look the fool. I assume that if there were only three listed, you would still be supportive, per Ms. Reinemeier, you would still be supportive of moving forward with that, keeping in mind that other people, okay. I also, just to be transparent, I also will want to engage with others, a few other stakeholders in addition to you all on that question, but I'm inclined to be supportive. I think based on what I've said over the last two months, it is, I have a responsibility to be supportive of this in the primary, and that includes this question of three and 10. It also includes the question of cost. I am not at all worried about, maybe this is wrong, but I'm not at all worried about the amount of cost in Georgia, because I think it will be a national discussion, for the reasons you mentioned, Ms. Garvey. I think we can hardly, I know that people are concerned, but putting resources into democratic, little d, democratic decisions is worthwhile. So that's where I am on the big picture. I do want to note a couple of thoughts. Ms. Port, you mentioned more informed voter, and that's a phrase that you used. And, and Mr. Theo, you mentioned more accurately reflects. So in law school, I took a course on election law, and there's all these different theories, as you guys, I think, all know. But for example, in New York, when they did away with local, very small, school board elections, I thought that was a step forward for transparency with respect to the mayoral decisions that were made. You can pack a district, you can spread out a district. Plurality voting was used by, in Texas, by white Democrats, and in Virginia, to disenfranchise voters of color. So I think it is important to be aware of that. There's both a numeric question, and then there's also what's behind little d democratic choices. Certainly, if you had asked me, I do not support caucuses with respect to many decisions, but I did work the Iowa caucuses. That's a generation ago. I do think, I'm not one who believes that partisanship is per se evil. I think it can result in clear choices. One person's negative campaigning might be another person's "I wish the choices were clearer" to voters. So it's all a plea to sort of keep the, have the conversation be aware that there are costs and benefits to the, to the democratic process that are out there. I think that the, the question of, but I think that for this action, we should move forward. It's responsibility. If there's some costs, I hope they won't be too great. I do have a little concern about the only three and 10 listed, but I still think that there's a responsibility to move forward with this one. And so hopefully, that can kind of move us towards a continued discussion. I do, I should, as I did in the last eight, nine weeks, reserve my view with respect to the general election, to be transparent with all those in the public that are here. But thank you for the opportunity to bring this forward. And I can say, just as one last thing, fortuitously, the Virginia Supreme Court acted in a way that made gerrymandering a wholly different subject. And perhaps more than anything, that might be, in my view, one of the most important little d democratic steps that's been taken in the past couple of years, and many of you worked really hard on it. Thanks.
Thank you. And just, you know, I associate myself with this conversation, think it's really helpful about the three votes. I think this has been a real exercise in, just because the legislature says it can be so, it does not make it so, which, sort of to the side conversation Mr. Schutz was sharing with, with Mr. Dorsey. You know, this started, actually, with Patrick Hobe giving Arlington the authority, which was terrific legislatively, but we couldn't actually use it, because the state's machines weren't capable of reporting. And they needed a year to be able to do that. And here we are really excited to take this step. But it does mean, right, it runs into the, the reality of needing to procure new voting machines. There's a lot that's unknown, right? I hope, Ms. Garvey, we will have nine candidates running for board next year. We may only have three, in which case, right, that, that question becomes immaterial, right? There are other questions about the timeline for procurement of the new machines. It is, I would love to be taking a grander step. We are nevertheless advancing stepwise, and I think it's worth doing. I want to just kind of get one body of questions in there to do, right, by the folks who weighed in, which is to just, Ms. Reinemeier, could you walk us through a little bit about tabulation? So we've talked about, I will argue till I'm blue in the face, that ranked choice voting is easy for voters. It's really hard to do it wrong, but it can be complicated when it comes to tabulation. So, and I know this is something that we could, well, we did spend a work session, right, spending a couple hours on talking about that. But can you just talk to us a little bit about, from those who are following along on election night, or the day after election, what would be different from our current process in terms of how long it would take, what kind of results people would see? And then if I can also sneak in that question about how, if at all, do recounts work?
So the first round of results will be released in the same way that they are now. There would be no change there. We would have those be able to release from the precincts, so that you would know how that first round went. When it comes to tabulating subsequent rounds, we would need data from these precincts to be delivered here centrally, so that we can, to run through the, the subsequent rounds. So timing of release of results, if we're talking about a primary, that would really be a conversation with the parties, because that is an election that essentially we are asked to run on their behalf. So I would want to have a conversation with them about what their expectations are, and how we can best deliver that. With that said, we are still counting votes for the November 8th general election now. We still have mail ballots that are outstanding. We still have provisional ballots that are outstanding, to the tune of over around 3,000 votes. So to say that it will take, I don't think it'll take longer to have results from our elections, but in a close election, it will take a while to know who really the winner is, if the results are close. Because we have to go through the provisional ballot and the mail ballot process to make sure every ballot, ballot is counted prior to releasing the full final results. So.
Really helpful. That's really helpful. And I think that's interesting, too, because there's sort of colloquially how we understand election results, even though, I mean, I think all of us are pretty confident in the results of Tuesday's election, for example, even knowing there are outstanding ballots, and then the technical. I realize, when I, when we received a number of questions, or a couple of questions about recounts in the feedback form, that I'm actually not sure how recounts work under the current system for local offices. I think we've all seen them happen for statewide offices. But could you tell us what the current status is? And if ranked choice, if we were to adopt this resolution, does that change at all under ranked choice?
So recounts, if the margin between the top two candidates currently under Virginia election law is less than one-half of 1%, then it triggers an automatic recount. If it's within 1%, but more than one-half, one-half of 1%, then the campaign that lost can petition to have a recount. In the event that the results don't change, then they would be paying for the recount. So if it's less than one-half of 1%, then it triggers the automatic recount. I imagine this, this would work much the same way with ranked choice voting. If we came down to a result that was less than one-half of 1%, then it would trigger an automatic recount. And the way that it works is, we would program the voting equipment to only look at the office that is subject to the recount, and then we would rescan every ballot for that office. Anything that was rejected by the scanner would be sent to a bipartisan recount board that would make the determination, if they could determine voter intent. And if so, then they would recommend the ballot be counted the way they want it, they thought that it should be counted. If they could not agree on voter intent after reviewing the ballot, then it does get sent to a judge to make the final determination. Because ranked choice voting does require a, all the votes have to be tabulated together to go through the rounds together, there would need to be some way to digitize any of, any and all ballots that are being tabulated in this, in the election. But that is something that we have the procedures in place to do. So.
Very helpful. Thank you. All right. Another round of questions, Mr. Dorsey, and then Mr. Carentones.
Actually, I don't think I have any more questions, so I'll have some remarks.
Okay, great. Mr. Carentones, more questions?
Yeah, just, just for the clarification of one concept. So the primary for county board, if we agree, will be with a separate ballot that will offer the choices, right? But this will be, so we will have two seats up. Will be that, how will, will this be handled on this ballot? In case we know that, I understand that ballot design is an art and a science. So, and, and second question to that is, the, the other primaries that may, may exist for, you know, for constitutional officers, et cetera, will be separate? Or, or how, how exactly, what is to be expected there?
Yeah. So the ballot standards, once again, are adopted by the State Board of Elections, and they have determined that the office, any offices using ranked choice voting should be on a separate page, whether that's a separate side or a whole separate sheet of paper. It should be listed separately, so that it can have separate instructions at the top of the ballot than the rest of the offices. So all of the other offices that are on the ballot next year, we do have every state senate district, house district, and all of the constitutionals up next year. Those would be on one, either sheet of paper or one side, and then the Office of County Board would be on the other side. It would just be one office for county board listed. But like I said, individuals would be able to rank up to three choices within that office. So even though there are two seats, the two seats can combine into one space on the ballot.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that good question. I think we tried to include that in the, in the fiscal impact analysis as well. There'll be a modest cost associated with maybe about $30,000 of printing longer ballots.
Yeah, if we would have to print, instead of a one-page ballot, we now are looking at a two-page ballot, that's obviously going to double your printing cost for ballots. So.
Yeah, neither has accused ranked choice voting of being an easier.
Yeah.
Fair, maybe, but easier not.
Thank you. Mr. DeFranti, questions?
No, this.
Okay. I'm going to wrap up with just a couple more questions, again, the ones that were highlighted. I wanted to make sure we have a chance to have Ms. Reinemeier speak to. Can you talk to us a little bit about the topic of the day, right, election security? How validation of our software and machines, how audits currently take place, and whether that would change at all under ranked choice voting?
So before every election, the, every piece of equipment used in the election runs through a series of, we call, logic and accuracy tests. And these are to make sure that the equipment is working the way that it should be working. So if we're talking about a voting machine, is it counting votes the way that we think it should be working? Is it rejecting an overvote if somebody makes a mistake marking their ballot? And in the case of poll books, we're making sure that the prompts that appear that should be in certain cases are appearing. So that is a process conducted by our electoral board in the advance of every election. That will not change with ranked choice voting. We will still run every piece of equipment through a logic and accuracy testing, and including the tabulation of those results. So we would have to, after voting on all of the machines, we would then have to tabulate and make sure that the tabulation of those rounds is what we expect it to be, because we're feeding the ballots and we know what the results should be. Does that make sense?
It does.
Yeah. So that is the pre-election process for certifying the equipment for use in that election. The post-election process is, so at this, we do have an audit bill in Virginia. I do not believe the county board is covered by a post-election audit at this point in time. It would be up to the local electoral board to request an audit of that race after the election. But how an audit works is, we currently use a risk-limiting audit. So the office is, basically, the way it works right now is, the office is drawn out of a hat by the State Board of Elections, and then they tell the localities which, that are impacted by the audit, that they need to conduct a post-election audit. Then they generate a list of ballots that we need to go pull for that audit. So once again, if we were doing a post-election audit, it would work very much the same way, where we would have a randomized set of ballots that we would go pull, and then we would look at those ballots to, to determine, is, are they within the margin expected to, yeah, yeah, suggest that the winner was the winner for that election.
Excellent. That's really helpful. Thank you. Okay, my last question before we, I'll make a motion that we can turn to comments. Lots of good discussion, certainly in our feedback form, but also today, about education and engagement. And Ms. Garvey, loved your point about creative mock elections. We, Arlington voted on its favorite farmer's market by ranked choice, right, last August, and I think there's a lot more opportunity to do that. I really appreciated the comments from Mr. Theo regarding the role of civic associations. I know the Civic Federation is interested. Ms. Port's comments, and offering of the League of Women Voters to play that role. I can tell from, tell you all also from conversations I've had with other stakeholders, such as the Chair of NAACP, we have other community and organizations interested in doing that type of education. So talk to us a little bit about what the, you, your team, the electoral board does now for engagement, and thoughts that you would have about how we, we could all be involved in educating Arlington voters about this change.
Yeah. So if we're talking about a primary election, I would say the amount of outreach that we do is lower, once again, because that is inherently a partisan process. So we ask the party to help out with outreach for those elections. So I'm, so once again, this would need to be a conversation with the parties using ranked choice voting in their election, about the level of engagement they hope to see. But my, when I talk about outreach, I think it's important to keep the audience's mind. So we're going to have to tailor our outreach efforts to the different audiences that we have. So we're going to have just generic voters, who really just need to understand how to mark their ballots. They don't need to understand logic and accuracy testing, tabulation, anything like that. So in Arlington County, the next population would be obviously candidates, and then some of our more sophisticated election, what I like to call the armchair political scientists, that are slightly more engaged with the process. So we'll want to have another lot of, level of engagement for those individuals in our office, so that they can understand how the results are being tabulated, and what to expect election night. So when we talk about generic outreach, my hope was to leverage some of the models that have been so successful in Arlington recently, the Complete Count Committee, even Missing Middle, the vaccine efforts. We have, we know what works, what outreach efforts work well in this community. And so if we can just pair what's already been done before, then I think we will be successful. We do have a large number of civic associations, so if we could put together a train, the trainer module, where they could run their own mock election, or we can send staff out to help run mock elections in these places, so they can see what the ballot will look like, and they can understand a little bit what that would look like. I think that will be instrumental to making sure that it is successful as we go forward with June.
Excellent. Thank you so much for that insight. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and get a motion on the table, and then welcome any questions. I am going to move that we endorse ranked choice voting as the election method for the June 2023 county board primary election, and further adopt the resolution included in the board report dated November 10th, 2022, to advertise a public hearing on December 17th, 2022, by the county board on an ordinance change to effectuate this method.
Second.
All right. I think I got Ms. Garvey first on the second. Let me turn to colleagues for comments. Mr. Dorsey, I think I saw you first, and then Mr. Carentones.
Actually, yes. Before I do comments, I did have a question that come to me. And maybe it's for you, Madam Chair. In terms of the engagement that we did, in addition to figuring out interest by, by zip code, did we also do age demographics or political identification? Because I'm, you know, reminded, from what Ms. White spoke to earlier, I too have found that the interest in this is very broad-based. I've engaged with young Republican groups, Democratic committee in Arlington, people who are really ironclad independents, who don't want to express any political preference and heard, you know, similar degrees of interest. I was wondering if Arlington's info reflected that as well?
We did not request any other demographic information. It's always the tension of how much you want to ask people to submit in a form, so you get it on the backend, versus also making the form straightforward. But one of the things I have given some thought to, you know, if I am going to be successful in bringing to you all a, a resolution similarly to adopt a general, is, you know, thinking about how are we collecting exit poll information, right, in June, to get a sense. And so I think that's a good piece of insider feedback, right? Can we collect a little more demographic information if we're considering expanding this, about what people's experiences were like?
Yeah, definitely. And so that's a, that question, I think, can lead into my concluding comments. You know, I think there's broad-based interest in this, at the very least, to see what it's like, and to see what happens. And so I absolutely have no concerns with moving forward with the action that we have today. But as is my want, I'm going to be a little bit detailed, and probably be a little bit of a, I won't call it a wet blanket, but a damp blanket, just on this conversation. As it relates to, you know, a lot of things that we've heard today, you know, ensuring the support of the majority, while I know that that is possible, it's not insured. You know, what, what we don't know is the degree at which a candidate may appear on a ranked choice ballot, and the degree at which they're preferred relative to all other candidates. So while we may get some sense of So while we may get some sense of, you know, someone making the cut, the degree at which that person is preferred or has support, is not necessarily known. There is, there is a desire that this will increase voter engagement, but as has been commonly noted, people do still have the ability, and in many jurisdictions that have implemented this thus far, people still just choose a person, which is fine. And then, of course, the notions that would eliminate the spoiler effect. Anytime you have a ranked method of voting, you can have spoilers. Compared to the past, the post, the effect is less likely, but it's simple math. You can have spoilers in any tabulation system where people are ranked. I say all of these things not to discredit RCV, but just to ground us in, it's a method of tabulation whose ability to deliver on the high ideals and promises that we, we hope for it rely on some other factors. It relies on, A, still, good candidates participating in the process. If you don't have good candidates, then all of the ideals of people being able to fully express their preferences and having someone who at least reflects and inform community support becomes less likely. It also requires that voters engage to a degree that, you know, perhaps they don't currently, in order to understand what the candidates are offering, and how their ballot should be constructed accordingly. So I just want us to recognize that as upvote has, I think, brought to the community conversation so well, in order to bring these high ideals to our community, it's a suite of reforms that we need to have in our, in our democracy and in our community. This may be one of them, in conjunction with expanded voter access, with fair and good districts, a whole host of other things that have been achieved, that we're currently working on, that we hope to be able to do in the future. So with that, I'd also just like to, because I can't, can't allow myself not to, to speak to this as it relates to current, the current political climate. It's a rhetorical question, but I wonder how many people know who the third candidate was in the Senate election in Georgia? If you know it, you can raise your hand and feel good about yourself, but most people have no idea, you know, who Chase Oliver is, and, and very fewer know what his positions are. He's a really unique candidate, you should look him up, very interesting guy. But you know, it could also be said that the people who came out to vote in Georgia for Chase Oliver probably came to vote for Chase Oliver, had no interest in the political process broadly, because he was such a unique candidate, and, you know, brought 2.1%, I believe was his vote count, to the table. You know, who knows? Who knows what it would have been like had ranked choice voting been in place? We do know that we would have had a conclusion, but whether or not that conclusion would have been something that in the light of day Georgians would have been happy with, especially considering the circumstances of how important their race is, is an unknown thing. So this is all to say, I am totally fine with ranked choice voting. I dig, dig doing it. I think it's, it's great for someone like me with my proclivities, but we have other work to do if we're gonna make sure that it's also part and parcel with the high ideals that we have for, for civic engagement and voting in our community. And, you know, I can't resist the opportunity to just again remind my good friend, Mr. Schutz, as we, we think about this issue and how it's evolved, I think Ms. Crystal said it very well, the initial ability for Arlington to be able to do something was because it was a new, it was a new thing. So creating that was fairly simple and straightforward, but it didn't do everything that we need. And even now, it doesn't do everything that we need. And I would say that the only thing that really concerns me about implementing this in Arlington is that we will have this as part of a dual system of how people choose different offices. In my perfect world, I would love the ability to have, I would love for us to have the ability to do this for every office that Arlingtonians vote for, and the fact that they have to think about the county board differently than they do other things, is actually putting more on the voters to sort of keep straight. And so for the time being, it's not ideal that we have, you know, this dual system going on, and I would have much preferred the ability, and for every locality in Virginia, to decide what they were going to do as opposed to what the legislature specifically designed, which is always the danger when you go with these piecemeal approaches to the, the General Assembly. So I've said a lot, happy to vote yes on this, but want us to be clear-eyed about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Dorsey. Mr. Karantone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Dorsey, I fully hear you, I think this is very well said. I, I also hear the proponents, and thank you so much for, for coming forward here. I believe I am the only one behind this dice that went through a ranked choice voting process. This was absolutely no problem, this was actually a joy, and I have no problem with that. However, I, and I see that the proponents are, are here because they strongly believe, and I align myself with them, that it, that RCV incentivizes candidates to appeal to broader swath of voters, resulting in, in, in less negative campaigns. And we have a lot of PTSD about negative campaigns in the nation, but not in Arlington. You know, as, as an immigrant in this country, I, I see that there's an old American tradition to believe that every time there is a problem in our political system, the solution has to be some sort of a technical fix. You know, and it's, it's quite interesting that 100 years ago, you know, the, the general electorate, women not included back then, thought the same. They thought that, yeah, let's introduce voter registration, for example. That was, that was another technical fix, and we know how well this works today, right? So, and because we have to fix it again, and again, and again. And, you know, nonpartisan offices was introduced back then. So in reality, we don't have enough evidence to, to clearly judge the this moderation effect of RCV. It's not implemented enough across the nation to, to really judge it. And I remind everybody that more than 60% of all Americans, definitely more, more than 60% of all Virginians, live in landslide districts, in districts where, you know, they're unassailable because of all the other things that have happened in the meanwhile, gerrymandering being the number one, lack of campaign finance reform being the other one, and a long, long list. What I see RCV delivering, and, and one of the reasons why, you know, I am open to this experiment in my community, is that, yes, it, it makes, it, the candidates with the Brothers Coalitions have won their races where RCV has been around for, for decades already. So this is almost congruent with plurality results in, in, in reality. And it's also effective against the spoiler effect, while I understand your skepticism about that, there, there are, you know, nuances on this. I do think that in, in general, the, the, the effect is, is genuine, and it's detectable. RCV is therefore credited for with lowering the threshold for the access for women and minorities, and we saw that in the, in the recent New York City mayoral and council race, that is often cited as an example of this. I don't believe that RCV ranked choice voting increases turnout. It is a more complicated system, there are differing opinions about that, I understand that, but in general, I don't believe that it will have any significant effect to that, to, to increase turnout. And this means, and has a lot to say to me about, you know, minority engagement, the, the strength and depth of our education efforts to, to, to educate our voters to actually use that. And it doesn't make it any easier if we have one type of voting system for one type of office, and a different type of voting system for different types of office. I definitely believe that ranked choice voting works better in environments where the political division lines are a little bit more blurred, they are not so stark. And I believe that Arlington is a good place to, 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 to try that out. But, you know, this is not the same thing, and I wouldn't compare ranked choice voting with, you know, the same mindset that chooses your favorite cereal. There is a lot of value statements behind that. Political choices are value choices, and they align with partisan affiliation in a democracy. And this is why I will continue to be, you know, very observant on how this works before we make decisions on transferring this, this procedure to general elections. I also don't think that ranked choice voting handles well divisions like ethnic or racial divisions, or, you know, deep socioeconomic divisions. I don't think that this is a, a system that really handles it better or worse than our existing systems. And I believe that many more variables are at play here. And finally, I, I have to say the exhausted votes issue, this is, these are votes where, like Ms. Garvey said, you know, voters stop at, you know, choosing more than three. We ended up in some places with the exhausted votes being more than the winning tally. And this actually forced the city of San Francisco, no, no less, to, to run a, to, to make it compulsory to go all the way 10, 10, 10 ranks. This is, you know, it's not such a slam dunk, it's not a, a, a linear progression into a, a better system. So we are engaging in the first exploration of that. I have to say, for the record and from this dice, there are two other reforms that I feel extremely strong about besides the, the ending gerrymandering. For me, campaign finance reform is absolutely critical. Who appears to be more appealing to a broader public needs to be able to finance that. And therefore, I strongly believe in, have a strong preference for public financing for, for political campaigns. And the second thing, that is very close to my heart, is the participation of foreign born residents who are not citizens yet, especially in local elections, which is possible, and we should really put it up. A lot of our fellow Arlingtonians cannot vote because they are not allowed, despite the fact that they're fully equal, invested in this community like everybody else who has a passport. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. DeFranti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be, I had some earlier comments, so I'll be succinct, I hope. First, Mr. Schutz, Mr. Cantwell, Mr. Theo, I want to really ask that you share with the Civic Federation appreciation for sticking with this issue and engaging on this issue. It is one where the Tiger Group, there's other issues in the Tiger Group, but this is important, and if you do that favor of conveying, if you could, my thanks, I know our thanks for the engagement from the Civic Federation on this, that'd be very much appreciated. The second point, our Electoral Board is here. Mr. Weinstein, Ms. Philip, Mr. McGee, I am very concerned about the steps that I believe are being considered for next year with respect to limiting ballot boxes. I would need to pursue and research the law with respect to this. I would submit, and I don't think this is that outside of what colleagues might consider too, if ballot boxes are limited because we don't have authority, then I will be interested in authority to make sure that we have as much, many resources in terms of hours to make sure that everybody can vote. And that's, that's a point, and I'll, I appreciate our Electoral Board for being here. And then just, I'll conclude with a thank you to everybody who talked, not just about support for this, but about doing the work, including Mr. Theo and Ms. Port, many others, doing the work to educate people. There will be many, many elections on the ballot next June, in my opinion, relative to last, the last few years. Confusion can be an enemy of, or can be a concern, and so the more we educate and engage, the more successful this will be for the outcomes that we all are seeking. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Garvey?
Thank you. Appreciate the reminders from some of our colleagues that nothing's perfect, so that's probably a good reminder. I, I definitely think we need to do that, I've done a lot of, I haven't done a ranked choice race like Mr. Karantone, but I've come close. I did a six-member primary where I got about quarter of the vote, and the winner got about 30% of the vote, and everybody else was in low double digits, and I was pretty sure from knocking on the doors that I was everybody's second choice. And in fact, a little bit out of the, before the, the election itself, about two weeks, I was feeling really good. And then about two weeks out, I started realizing, everybody's voting for their best friend and somebody they know, but they think they're gonna get me, and they didn't. But then I, you know, I might not have been here today, and I'm real happy where I am, so it's, it all kind of works out. But obviously, I think ranked choice would have made a really big difference. And I first got the idea then, because actually there was a state senator who was so upset about who actually won that race, that it was thinking of putting in a bill actually requiring some ranked choice voting, or at least that you had to get 50, 50% of the, the vote, because actually that one person that won was, while I was everybody's second choice, he was everybody's last choice, except for those that voted for him. It's pretty curious how elections work out. And then I, I have been in some ones where there've been, you know, two votes, and you go and you ask, can I have your vote, or can I have your second vote? And everybody really is nicer, it actually makes for a much more pleasant experience. So I, I think this is gonna be great. I have to thank Mr. Schutz particularly. I think the first time I really heard about the, the term ranked choice and looked at it was when you sent an email to me. It's been a number of years you have been really working on this, so thank you very much. Thank you to our Chair for all of the heavy, I mean, there's been a lot of work behind this, and really appreciate that, and again, to Ms. Reiner Meyer, who just makes it all happen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, before ready for vote, I just, I really appreciate my colleagues' willingness to consider this. Certainly, this has been a strong interest of mine, and I am grateful, despite its limitations and ability to fix all of our problems, that we are nevertheless willing to give it a try. I want too to thank our Electoral Board. It's really a delight to have all three of you here for your extraordinary work, as my colleagues have thanked you for the work that you've done in, in joining our team in, in yet another successful election, but also your, your willingness to engage with me and my colleagues on this issue. Mr. Weinstein, your, your leadership is going to be greatly missed. I think this has been an Electoral Board that has really prioritized good governance ahead of any partisan ideology, and I hope that's something that will continue, even though state law means that the composition of the Electoral Board will change next year. I think your, your best continued choice has been your support of an incredible registrar in Ms. Reiner Meyer, and your leadership, I think one of the things that is not, has gone unremarked on to date, your leadership on this issue statewide, your willingness to serve on working groups, your willingness to, to chase down the specifics, again, right? This seems like a great idea, it cannot be done with one fell swoop, it requires a lot of extensive work with the, the State Board of Elections and other jurisdictions, and I'm very grateful for that. You know, I think there, there've been a, a lot of, there's been a lot of good discussion among these concluding comments about the, the non-silver bulletness of this particular reform. While we're being a little aspirational, I will, I will however note that there is a teaching in my faith, which I cite often, which is that you are not obligated to complete the work of repairing the world, but neither are you free to desist from it. And in a moment when I think many of us feel despair about the future of democratic norms and participation, at a time when election denialism is in the headlines, when even in well-run elections, there is still marked polarization, in a sense that, that it is increasingly difficult for us to find any sort of way forward together. We cannot control even everything on the Arlington County ballot, right, as, as colleagues have said. This reform alone will not be sufficient to overcome some of those dynamics in our society, and certainly the forces that are trying to undermine our, our democratic traditions. Nevertheless, I think this is worth trying. I hope that we can not only excite Arlington voters about the potential, give them an opportunity to express the full range of their preferences, but also provide a model to other communities. I have throughout this work been in touch with other jurisdictions in the Commonwealth, and I know there are others who are sort of on the edge of considering this. I hope that we can be a leader, but, but not alone for very long. I'm optimistic we will not be, and I think by modeling the success of this, we can perhaps begin to bring some energy to the idea of electing our state legislators this way, our state candidates that way, this way, maybe even down the line, our federal elections this way. So we will not complete the work of resolving polarization and shoring up our democratic traditions, but it is our responsibility to contribute to doing so, and I think this is a small step. our responsibility to contribute to doing so. And I think this is a small step, as we do. So, with that, I think we are ready for a vote. Without further ado, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you to those who've come in today. Thank you again, Ms. Reinermeier, and to our electoral board. All right. We have one other item, I believe, to come before the board. Ms. Jacobs, could you call that item for us?
Yes, that's item number 36, is the presentation of financial results and closeout for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022.
Thank you so much. I'm going to turn to the manager to introduce our team with the Department of Management and Finance, who have been so patient this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With me today is Richard Stevenson, our Budget Director, and Maria Meredith, Chief Financial Officer for the county. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to start off the presentation with a short introduction, and then hand it over to Richard for the bulk of the presentation, then enclose it out.
No pun intended.
Pun intended. So, if we can go to the slides. Okay, so we'll go, we'll advance to the next, the next one. I wanted to spend a few minutes talking about this slide. So, the narrative sometimes when we approach closeout is, you know, we end a year, and we're looking back to the year that ended on June 30. And we end up with, in this particular year, we have $362.8 million in our fund balance. And people say, wow, you know, that's a really big amount of money. And we come here every year, and we'll say about 90% of that is set aside for items that are either by law, we cannot reallocate, or by board policy have already been allocated. So, what remains then, in this particular year, we have $26.8 million that's available. And that compares favorably, as you look as a percentage of the overall general fund budget year over year, to have about 2.4% of the budget available. And so, I'd like to have people just stretch their brains a little bit. When we prepare the fiscal '22 budget, okay, and that was adopted for the fiscal year that began in June of 20, July of 2021, and ended in June of 2022, that preparation began eight months before that. And we were trying to do our best to estimate what would happen 18 months into the future. And if we're able to get this close, I think that's pretty darn good. And given that, we will obviously go through a number of changes during the course of, as the calendar moves ahead. But when we reconcile our budget at the end of the year, to have this amount of money available, to me, is a sign of good fiscal stewardship. So, with that, I'm going to have Richard walk through how it is we get from a fund balance of $362.8 million to the point where we have $26.9 million available. And then my recommendation is that those funds be set aside and be made available for the fiscal '24 budget. We'll have a fuller presentation on Tuesday evening about our outlook for the fiscal '24 budget. And I think the process today is for you to hear the presentation, and then on Tuesday evening, there'll be public testimony. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Richard.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. As the manager highlighted, the development of the 2022 budget started a long time ago. And a lot of things do change, and we make adjustments as we go through the fiscal year. In the end, we had, fortunately, revenue was, came in above budget. We were, a lot of things changed through the, over that timeframe of developing the '22 budget to its final execution, with being in the middle of the pandemic still, the economic crunch of that. So, a lot of things, both on the revenue and expenditure side, were different than we expected, you know, this last fiscal year. But in the end, came within 2.4% of the, with only that amount for discretionary use. Before I get into the next couple of slides, because what I want to do is, is highlight that 91% of fund balance that is restricted, give the board and community a little perspective on where those monies go or stay. But we have a closeout document that's posted that's about 43 pages, a lot of dense material in there. And I wanted to highlight just one or two things sort of newer to the report this year than in prior years, that are affecting some of the numbers in the, in the report. First is an accounting standard adjustment related to unrealized gains and losses on county investments. This is often referred to as mark-to-market. This adjustment accounts for the impacts of the change in interest rates and their effect on the value of our holdings. So, that's, some of that is outlined in the report. Another adjustment is the inclusion in the county's reported fund balance for some fiduciary accounts, which in prior fiscal years were not included in the, in that total of that $362 that we have for this year. And some of examples of those types of accounts that are now in our fund balance that we're discussing are monies that are collected for things like friends of the library, or donations, or monies we get from the state for certain incentive agreements, where they're, the county is holding those monies, but they're not the county's assets necessarily. And then lastly, a new requirement this year for how we report leases in our financial statements. And you'll see the, you'll have a report next month on the full audited county financials. The auditors will come before the board to describe their conclusions. So, moving to the next slide, for the allocation of fund balance, a significant portion, almost 30%, of the monies remaining are from our reserves that we maintain. We have an operating reserve of 5.5% of the general fund budget by policy, the existing monies that were there at the end of last fiscal year. And then adding to that reserve, based on those fiscal policies, amounts which both the county and the schools participate in. And so, the operating reserves in, for this year are $82.4 million. We have a self-insurance reserve of $5 million, which is unchanged since 2021, and a stabilization reserve of 1% of our general fund budget that stands now at $15 million. The next two groups of restricted funding are the legally restricted funding, about almost $30 million. These include seized asset funding and some different various grants that are restricted, and also fiduciary accounts. This is what I just mentioned, having to do with other monies that aren't county monies, like the Friends of the Library revenue. Our schools, we share in taxes above budget with them, and they retain their expenditure savings. So, schools fortunately had expenditure savings of $29.2 million, a combination of, you know, operating savings and capital. And then monies that in excess of the budgeted revenue that we had for 2022, they share in their 47% of that. I will highlight that a large portion of that $26.9 million was already identified in the spring, when you adopted the '23 budget, and you made that allocation to them in their base, base budget of almost $20 million. Next, another important and significant portion of fund balance is our AHIF balances. In total, between our general fund balances and our home funding, there's almost $104 million that will be carried over into FY 2023. And it's a combination of unallocated balances for a variety of, with monies coming in from a variety of places listed there, and also includes about $58 million of allocations that you have already made, where the money has just not gone out the door yet. The next slide is a summary slide of two more that I will highlight on. These are actions that the board has already, things that the board has already taken. So, that could be the decisions that you took as a part of the '23 budget, short-term financing, projects that straddle fiscal years, and some additional items that I'll highlight. So, on the next slide, when you adopted the budget, and the manager identified one-time monies that were anticipated to be realized in 2022, you took a variety of decisions and included them in the '23 adopted budget. So, shifting some money to Pago and land acquisition, along with bonus compensation adjustments. There's, the last bullet there, a sub-bullet, is $6.5 million. There's a number of smaller one-time allocations for one-time projects that are included in the adopted budget, which you're, I'm sure, very familiar with, things like the historic preservation grants, one-time monies to go to additional library books, the collection, tree canopy study, and the zero-waste plan updates, a number of miscellaneous items. And along with short-term, our short-term finance projects that will be debt service paid out over the next several years. Next slide talks a little bit more about the, some prior allocations. We have a number of projects that the board allocated money to, various studies that just were not complete. And so, carrying over the funding into the next fiscal year to complete those types of things. We have some encumbrances, contractual costs that just weren't paid by the time we closed the books. So, those expenses hit 23, so we carry over those monies to pay for those goods and services that we received prior to the end of the fiscal year. And then there are a couple items which have had more recent conversation with the board, utilizing some of the monies anticipated from the end of the fiscal, fiscal year '22. And so, that's in summary of the 91% of the fund balance that's, that we have that's restricted, or otherwise the board has already taken action on. And as the manager mentioned, we have $26.9 million in discretionary funding remaining.
So, thank you, Richard, for that summary. I wanted to close with the following observations. We, you know, we're in the situation here, we've executed a full fiscal year budget in fiscal '22. Right now, here, we're sitting in November of '22 and fiscal '23, and we lose a little bit of sight of what was actually going on during fiscal '22. We were still very much focused on the pandemic, and we were, and we continue to be in a situation where it's been very difficult for us to do some hiring. And so, we have some expense savings associated with that. Our revenues did relatively well, based on what we had estimated. But again, I'd like to emphasize that I think this is a very, we're very close, and it's fortunate that we have this money available. The reason why I'm suggesting we take this money and roll it into the next fiscal year will become, I think, more apparent in the presentation I make Tuesday evening, when I'm talking about where we think we're facing right now with an estimate for fiscal '24. I've, I haven't stated this publicly, but I will right now, as a preview for Tuesday evening, are with inflation and with the expenses increasing, and the revenue outlook not as robust as we would like. I think setting aside this money makes the most sense. But happy to answer any questions today, and to go into further analysis on Tuesday after I give you the fiscal '24 outlook.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I really appreciate that summary, too, of your recommendation. And I'll note, too, it's been my preference, and I think a number of my colleagues as well, that not only is it smart, given the likely outlook, but it also is better from a governance perspective to talk about unallocated funds at the time we are making our major budget decisions, so that we really can balance the full weight of priorities in our community. So, again, as the manager noted, we have no action today. We also are not going to hear public comment until Tuesday. We wanted to provide this so our community has a little bit of time to digest it before bringing forward any comments they may have, as well as us. But Ms. Garvey, for you, and anybody else who might have a question for the manager or DMF at this time?
Absolutely. No, no questions. I think just anybody who's sort of paying attention and thinking about coming and speaking, just think again about inflation. I'm old enough to remember when we had really high inflation, but I think a lot of people haven't experienced that. It really can wreak havoc with budgets, and people need to be aware of this. So, I think the recommendation is quite solid. But there may be some folks who, you know, it's hard to realize how much things maybe have changed. So, thank you.
Thanks for saying so. Right. So, unless there are any other questions, I am going to give a serious thanks to our manager and to the DMF team, who is always working on a budget. It's, we're lucky if you're working on merely two instead of three simultaneously. So, we appreciate you all. Unless there are any other items to come before the board today, we are going to go ahead and recess until Tuesday, November 15 at 3:00 p.m. We look forward to seeing everyone then. Thanks so much.